Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Pinha?
Present.
Councilmember Irwin?
Present.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
And Mayor Gillette?
Here. Thank you. Item four, requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. We have none. Item five, our special presentations for this evening. We're going to begin the special presentations. If you'll give me just a moment to step down to the podium, and we'll get it underway. Don't tackle him! Good evening!
Good evening!
Good evening! Look like a bunch of advertisements for Westlake and the Lancers. Boy, farm teams abound, huh? Okay, here we go. "In December of 2009, many of our local teams became champions of their leagues. Tonight, we're celebrating their achievements. As a council member and a parent, I've seen the importance of sports in the lives of our youth. Experiences in good sportsmanship and teamwork, healthy physical activity, constructive use of time. Tonight, we have four champion teams with us. Gold Coast Youth Football League, four teams, and Pacific Youth Football League Champions." I'd like to introduce Hector Castro, the Westlake Braves Athletic Director of 18 years. Hector, you'll take it from here. Please come up.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, and of course, on behalf of the Braves, I'd like to thank the council for all of their support and for inviting the boys here tonight. It's a special thing for them, and your support for the youth of this community is special, and thank you for that. With that being said, I'd like to bring up our first coach, and that is Coach Pat Earhart, coach of our Bantam Blue Team.
It's really a pleasure to be here this evening, and again, on behalf of the Westlake Bantam Blue Team, thanks for inviting us tonight. We really appreciate it. We had a really, just a wonderful season. These boys just were so dedicated. We asked a lot out of them from the very get-go. During our season, we started a jamboree out in Simi Valley, which was a real hot weekend. It was a very tough, tough task for the boys, but they, you know, they completed the weekend, and on our way, we went to, starting our first playoff game, September, shortly, September 11th, 12th. But, season started out a little slow. We won our first game and got, got beat by a Simi team, 8-0, in the second week, which we learned a lot from that week, and then on we went. And during the middle of the season, we progressively got more confidence and whatnot, and of course, entering into the playoff time is a new season, and the kids really battled. Had a great game at home. We had Moore Park at home, and did very well against them, and traveled, took an eight o'clock game up at Santa Clarita, played, again, the Simi team that we got beat in the second week. Again, we came up on top there, and then we hosted the Super Bowl and beat a very, very good Santa Clarita team. So, again, congratulations to the players. Again, we really thank you for inviting us tonight, and we look forward to next, this fall. Thanks.
What, what we're going to do, this is the fun part of this job, I get to present a commendation to commemorate the accomplishments that you guys pulled off, and then we're going to ask the council members to come out, and if you won't mind, we'd like to have our picture taken with you. So, with that in mind, this commendation is honor of 2009 Westlake Braves Bantam Blue Team of the Gold Coast Youth Football League. Westlake Braves Bantam Blue Team defeated the Santa Clarita Wildcats Bantam Navy 26-8 on December 5th, 2009, in the Bantam Championship Game of the Gold Coast Youth Football League Super Bowl. And the team and coaching staff can be proud of their great season of 10 wins and two losses. Westlake Braves Bantam Blue Team showed true sportsmanship, determination, discipline, and teamwork, and the Westlake Braves Bantam Blue Team served our community with distinction. Now therefore, I, Dennis Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend the Westlake Braves 2009 Bantam Blue Team and congratulate the team and coaches for their outstanding season and victories in the Gold Coast Youth Football League. Congratulations, boys.
Next, we'd like to introduce the coach of our Bantam, or correction, J1 Blue Team, and that's Coach Jack Demel. Unfortunately, our head coach, John Kiroz, couldn't be here tonight. He wishes he could. The boys, we got those guys in August, and we worked them very hard, and they really responded. They had a great season. We lost one regular season game to Santa Clarita, and we ended up beating them in overtime in the Super Bowl, so any time you beat Santa Clarita, it's a good thing. Very proud of the boys. It was all, all their job.
Gentlemen, also for you, a commendation in honor of the 2009 Westlake Braves Junior One Blue Team of the Gold Coast Youth Football League, defeated the Santa Clarita Wildcats Junior One Navy 6-0 on December 5th, 2009, in the Junior One Championship Game of the Gold Coast Youth Football League Super Bowl. And the team and coaching staff can be proud of their great season, 11 wins and one loss. And once again, as the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, I'm honored to present this commendation to you and your coaching staff. Congratulations, Coach.
Next on our list is the coach of our senior team, Coach Mark Jury.
Again, on behalf of the Westlake Braves Senior Team, Mayor Gillette, City Council, thanks very much for inviting us. This is a great honor. It's a great pleasure being here. I wish I could have been here in previous years, but unfortunately, this is my first year in the championship, so I'm enjoying it. Coach Ron Uskali is actually the head coach, and unfortunately, he was called away. He's in, he's back east working, enjoying the snowstorms back east, and I'm sure he is, wish he could be here, but unfortunately, he can't. Some folks may not know... So, a fact that may not be known, not only about this team, but the team that preceded these, these boys last season, the team last season was 14-0, and we ended up this season, what did we finish, guys, 11-0, 12-0? I lost track. So, so this, the seniors team at Westlake has a record spanning two years of 24, 25-0. They've been a great bunch of kids, very well coached by Ron Uskali. This is my first year coaching this group. And the wins are great. It's a lot of fun. It's easier to have fun when you're winning all the time. But the thing that really stands out to me about this team is not the wins, not the athletic ability of the boys, but really how they came together as a team very early on. They gelled, they supported each other, and we had a saying all, all season that everyone just needs to do their job. And if they do their job, and they trust their teammates to do their job, the wins will take care of themselves. And I can say, watching these boys throughout the season, starting very early in the summer and working hard all, all summer, all fall, together, shoulder by shoulder, these boys did their jobs, and it was just an incredible experience and an honor being these boys' coach and watching them, these young men, coming together, really focused on, on one goal as a team, and supporting each other, not only on every game throughout the, the season, but in the playoffs, tough, tough times, good times, these boys always supported each other, and they all did their jobs, and it was a great honor being their coach and a pleasure watching them play.
Coach, let's hope you, this is the first of many, many more years, and what a slogan inside the locker room, if everyone just does their job. Got it. Commendation, this is a commendation in honor of the 2009 Westlake Braves Senior Team of the Gold Coast Youth Football League, and it speaks specifically to the defeat of Simi Valley Vikings, 30-14, on December 5th, 2009, at the Senior Championship Game of the Gold Coast Youth Football League Super Bowl. And the team and coaching staff can be proud of their undefeated season, and this has 10 wins and no losses, but I heard 12, so somewhere in there, the number's absolutely right. Once again, gentlemen, to you and the coaching staff, it's my honor as the mayor of your city to congratulate you, a phenomenal season, job well done. And again, congratulations to our Westlake Braves team. Now, I'd like to introduce Coach Sean Casey from our Thousand Oaks Titans Pee Wee Team. Titans, Titans, Titans. That sounds familiar. Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. Pee Wee Team on the Pacific Youth Football League. Coach, would you please join me up here and tell us more about the Thousand Oaks Champions?
Yes, I can talk loud enough while they're coming up. Like most of these coaches have talked about before me, the season doesn't really start in September, it starts in July. And these kids worked hard all the way from July to the first game in September. The conditioning that we really stressed with these kids was something I've never seen at this level of football, and they, and they took every bit of it. They went on to a 12-0 season, which if anybody's ever, you know, had an undefeated season like I know the Westlake Senior Team did, you kind of go through every game with a target on your back. So you guys got everybody's best each, each week and week out, and you guys did the test of time. They won a Super Bowl, beat a team, the other team from Camarillo, 20-26, in the Super Bowl game at Newberry Park. And then, not to be outdone, we were asked to play a, a last game against the Antelope Valley Lancaster-Palmdale Super Bowl winners. And not knowing anything, or seeing any film on the team, or knowing what we were facing, the kids, we asked the kids, "Do you want to go one more week?", and they all said, "Yeah, let's play again." Even the parents said, "Yeah, let's play another week." So we did that, and beat the Lancaster-Palmdale team that had a great season themselves. We beat them 26-16 in the final game to cap a 12-0 season. So, I think Coach JB and myself are very proud of you guys, and hope you continue to play football and get better, so you can one day be big guys like these and do the same kind of things. Thank you.
Boys, it's our honor to congratulate and commend you on your accomplishment. It's really a big deal, and we're very proud of you. With that thought in mind, it's my honor to present this commendation in honor of the 2009 Thousand Oaks Titans Pee Wee Team of the Pacific Youth Football League. Thousand Oaks Titans Pee Wee Team defeated the Camarillo Roadrunners on December 5th, 2009, in the Super Bowl game of the Pacific Youth Football League, and the Titans Pee Wee Team and coaching staff can be proud of their undefeated season of 12 wins and zero losses. Additionally, the Titans Pee Wee Team defeated the Lancaster Jets, 26-16, on December 12th, 2009, in a dual-league Super Bowl. Boys, it's my privilege as the mayor of your city to award you this commendation and congratulate you and your coaches on a phenomenal season. Best of luck. See you back here next year. As a voice sit-down, we're very proud of these young football players. Thank you to your coaches, your families, for doing such an outstanding job. Congratulations. I know how much fun it would be for you all to stay here tonight, but at this time, if you want to leave with mom and dad and parents and family, thank you for coming down.
Have you ever been here before?
Thank you, please. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Jackie, I resisted the temptation to say that I had two kids in my Lancers. I think that was trying to count. I think everything worked.
Thank you so very much. All right, at this time, we will continue. Item six, Public Comments Section. Would the clerk please call item six?
Now is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda, and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Seven people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this, this evening is Laudris Palma, followed by Kathy Carlson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laudris Palma. I'm resident of Thousand Oaks, and I worked for the past 14 years, I worked as an early educator teacher. For the past five months, I worked for the NFL and the city center. And the reason that I'm here is because someone needs to hear what happened in the program, well, especially with the people who run in the program. I feel that I'm discriminating, they discriminate myself, because they fired me January 15, and the reason that they gave me is because I don't have the same philosophy that they have. And this is strange, because they hired me for my high qualification, my experience, and the way I work with the childrens, that I disagree for many things that they doing in the program. And January, and November 25th, 2009, my first complaint is arrived. My co-teacher and I have a, a meeting with the supervisor and the director, and the reason was because I told one of the moms to bring his food for her child, because he doesn't eat nothing the whole day. And they, I told them that I feel so bad because the child doesn't eat nothing, so they told me that I had to put my feelings apart, so they don't care about the children's. And another thing is that the work environment is hostile, so many of the parents and myself feel like they harassed, because, and the reason, another reason is that only the Hispanic parents, so when they approach and ask about the child and how they doing and everything, they come close to me and hear what I'm saying. So, and, and I think that is horrible experience working in that place. And another thing is that my supervisor makes stories about I talk bad things about the program. It's any program that work for childrens is not bad, the people who run in the program. So they make stories that I talk bad things about the teacher. I never talk nothing about my teacher, because he's a wonderful teacher. And another thing is that they say that I call licensed with no proof. I never called them, but they said. And I know that this one, they don't give me my job back, but someone needs to hear, and everything that I say here is, I write in here, so they... And another thing that I had to mention is that they don't follow the menu. So they make the menu very nice, very neat.
Excuse me, Mrs. Palma, could, Mrs. Hong, could you please follow and do some follow-up right now and clarify, she may, I believe that Mrs. Palma may even have a written statement there that she might be willing, so we can make sure we get the information and get it where it needs to go. Thank you. Thank you. Kathy Carlson, followed by Dave Go Branson. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm also going to speak about the problems at the Thousand Oaks City Center preschool. You're partnering with the Caneo Valley Unified School District now. Can you hear me? These are problems about the city center preschool that Mrs. Palma has talked to you about. She was a teacher at Roots and Wings. And if you look at the advertisement and all the hoopla, that when you canceled Roots and Wings and you put in the inferior Neighborhood for Learning, they convinced a handful of the Roots and Wings teachers to stay on. Little by little, over the last few months, they fired them, fired them, fired them. Why? As Mrs. Palma said, "Oh, it's a philosophy, difference in philosophy." Well, they're the ones with the high quality. Now, they're getting low-quality, part-time people. And as I told you before, it's running in the red every month. The first quarter was $60,000 to $70,000 in the red. Now we're in the third quarter. You need to cancel this contract. You have a one-year contract with the state of California. You have a two-year contract with CVUSD to be the subleasee. But it says that the school district is responsible for all the financial problems, lawsuits, and so forth. And there's going to be a few lawsuits for hostile work environment. That's what Mrs. Laudris was telling you about. The menus are not being followed. Milk is watered down or it isn't there. Now, why? If you're giving so much money to this school, how come the cook is saying she asks for more money, more supplies? "Oh, we're having money problems." Okay, as you remember, Roots and Wings went negative for the first four years, right? That was a private party, and she and her husband took the risk for four years. They had another preschool that helped bring it along until they could make a profit. Well, the Way Neighborhood for Learning and the Caneo Valley is running it, they get paid whether they do a good job or not. It doesn't come out of their pockets. Now, the executive director is so stressed, she doesn't come to any meetings. She doesn't give the reports at the district advisory council. I understand she's hiding out at Crowley House. I went there on Thursday. She had herself locked in there. Yep. So why are we paying her a salary? We, taxpayers through the school district. So you have to decide if you're going to continue the contract, if it's costing too much money. The state auditors do not give a grant. You were lied to when you were told there's a no-cost grant. Call the state auditor. I have the phone number, and she will tell you. And she's told some of your city people here who got on the phone and yelled at her. It's her program. It is not a grant. So July 1, there will be a bill. It could be anywhere from $20,000 to half a million dollars. Because what happens is that the school has to show that they earned it and they spent the money. So every quarter, they're being given some of this $650,000. So, all of these subsidies, they go negative. So, thanks for listening. And we have one more speaker on this subject.
Thank you. Dave Go Branson, followed by Deo Doan. Good evening, Mr. Go Branson.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette and city council members. I'd like to just kind of hit a couple of highlights regarding the agenda item regarding oak trees in the public comments section. As a resident of Thousand Oaks for over 35 years, I do have some experience with the issue at hand. I've compiled quite a file regarding these items from the LA Times of April 20th in 2003. Our then-city councilman Dennis Gillette was quoted as saying, "The oak tree is so symbolic of our community. If at all possible, my preference would be to see that a tree of substance go back there." The headline was "City Soon To Be 999 Oaks." I know a lot of work has been done on the issue that's before you this evening. And I just wanted to get my two cents worth in on public comments. "400-year-old Old Oak Tree Topples No One Injured," one headline. "Oak Tree Falls On Oldest Home In Thousand Oaks." "Oak Tree Topples In T.O. Yard Misses Kids By Minutes." "Landlord Had Applied For A Fell Oak." That was me. There is something amazing about our sacred oak tree, and that is that, for no reason at all, some of these trees collapse. And some of these trees were here before the city and before the houses that were built under them. So tonight, in the issue before you, I would like to bring your attention to common sense, to fairness. I would like you to think about what you're voting on tonight, because what you're voting on tonight will last well beyond your term and several other terms. I think there's a way to handle this ordinance this evening that is both fair and common sense. And I look forward to discussing that with you further. Thank you.
Thank you. Deo Doan, followed by Annette Hagopian. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Deo Doan, and I live at 658 Rabbit Creek Lane in Newbury Park, a part of our beautiful city of Thousand Oaks. In my day job, I am an architect and urban designer, but a part of my community engagement activities, I am now the chair of the Ventura County Civic Alliance, which, as you know, was an initiative of the Ventura County Community Foundation, founded in 2001 with the mission to promote a healthy and sustainable future for the region. We are a coalition of business and community leaders that get together to commit to bring all the economic environment and social equity interest together to identify, prioritize, and address the complex challenges that our region are going through. And as a matter of fact, we are in the midst of our second phase of a project called the Compact. There will be a series of workshops coming up in April, and I would like to let you know to look out for that. We would love to have the participation of as many residents of Thousand Oaks as possible, as well as the elected officials. And another project that we have just recently completed is the publication of a brochure about the most livable communities in our county, and Thousand Oaks is one of them. So I would like to have distributed. There should be enough copy for everyone. So, looking forward to have a chance to engage many more of you in the near future. And if you have any questions, please call 805-988-0196. Or contact us via the internet, www.vccf.org/civicalliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Annette Hagopian, followed by Maria Serrano. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Hagopian. I live at 1252 La Granada Drive in Thousand Oaks. And I am very pleased to be here tonight to let you know about an exciting project that has been undertaken to preserve the pictorial history of the Caneo Valley for our future generations. A group of broad-based community organizations headed by the Thousand Oaks Library Foundation has initiated the community photo project entitled "Caneo Through the Lens." We are looking for photographs, negatives, and slides depicting life in the Caneo as it used to be. Pictures ranging from landscapes to historical events, community celebrations, civic events, and particularly, family life in the Caneo and the activities of those who were here at the time of incorporation. With so many of our early residents passing away or relocating to other areas, we felt it was imperative to gather the remaining photographs before they are forever lost. All of the materials are going to be scanned and returned immediately to the owners. Many of the sponsoring organizations, including the city of Thousand Oaks and the city of Westlake and Caneo Wrecken Park District, will be holding scanning events in the near future, and it will be well-publicized in local papers. What we intend to do with these scanned photographs will be to include them in a web-based archive that will provide easy, open internet access to images and papers that will document the history of the Caneo Valley. We feel that this project is very timely since it will be completed in time for the 50th anniversary of the city of Thousand Oaks. And our hope is to publish a book using these photographs and a historical narrative to celebrate that anniversary. Thank you.
The Hagopian, the easiest contact number for people that might be watching this and think they have something? Again, please.
449-2660, extension 228.
And that's a number into and an extension at the Thousand Oaks Library.
That is right. The scanning will be done, for the most part, in the special collections department.
Okay. I did find those pictures of the city's first mayor, Bob Tally, and Sheriff William Hill shaking hands over the first new Thousand Oaks police car in June 1964. So, and I did call in, so.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you. Best of wishes with that. Maria Serrano, and our last speaker, Mr. Nick Kidway. I understand Ms. Serrano has a special request because of a language issue?
Yes. She wants me to interpret for her.
Okay, fine. Because of the time delay in interpretation, what have you, let's give her a little extra time. We'll give her an extra three minutes, so. Please, go ahead.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria.
Get her, please, get her close to the microphone, so. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria, soy la mamá de Alejandro. Tuve un problema en la escuela del niño y lo tuve que sacar porque él lloraba cada vez que iba. Y un día en la noche tuvo pesadillas y como convulsiones. Desespantado porque yo no sé, una maestra le gritó muy fuerte y por eso tuve que sacarlo. She indicated that she had to take out her son because he ended up having a lot of nightmares and he was having a lot of difficulties at the school or the daycare center. It's a, I'm sorry, the center. So basically, she ended up taking out her son from the program because of these issues. That's basically the bottom line.
Okay. Why don't we ask her to use that second microphone if it isn't too uncomfortable, and then you can repeat right after, if you find a natural break. It will bend up towards her.
Después que lo saqué...
There we go. Thank you.
Las maestras me pidieron que firmara solo una hoja donde... de que lo estaba sacando porque no tenía transportación, pero que no explicara mi caso. She says thereafter, she was told to sign a form indicating that she had no transportation, and basically, that was, you know, not something that she was willing to do, but she ended up having to do it. In essence, she feels like she was coerced to do it.
Okay.
También hubo una vez donde los niños hubo... Yo sentí que era racismo porque en una mesa pusieron a los niños hispanos y en otra mesa pusieron a los niños americanos. Y les ponían más atención a los demás niños que a los hispanos. Okay. She also felt that there was some issues of racism. She felt that there was separation. Basically, they had all the Caucasian kids in one table and all the Hispanic kids on the other, and they were paying more attention to the Caucasian kids than the Hispanic kids. Solo me dijeron que tenía que quedarme callada y no decir nada, que no era ningún problema. They told her that she shouldn't say anything, that she was supposed to stay quiet and not say anything about this. That's all she has to say.
That's it. Tell her from us, thank you very much. I know it's not easy to come down into a forum like this, and especially with the language issue, so, thank you very much. Just, excuse me one minute. Mrs. Bill de La Pena has a question?
Actually, I don't have a question. I just want clarification. As I understood what she said, is that the reason she pulled him out is because not only the nightmares, but the teachers in school were screaming at the boy? I think that is what she said. Yes, that's true. Okay. And then, the second comment was that she was forced to sign the reason she was leaving to indicate that she had no transportation, but that was not at all the case. But they wanted her to sign a paper that stated she was pulling him out of school because she didn't have transportation.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I suggest the city clerk that, to ensure that the council gets the information and gets it as accurately as possible, that we have a transcription made of this, whatever the follow-up is? Would you let her know that?
Okay.
So, we'll make sure that we get it and we get it properly interpreted. Okay. Thank you very much. Our final speaker under public comment, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette. I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful... My name is Nick Iqbal Kidway, resident of Newbury Park. Dr. Glancy, ¿qué ha pasado? Me parece que si hablo Urdu, ya sabes que hablo Urdu con Jackie Irwin y Claudia también hablo Urdu. Right, Andy Fox? I'm trying to see if I can get some additional work for translators in this city. My English is weak, as you know, Dr. Glancy or Dr. Gillette. I'm behind the times. I watched the meeting last time, and a citizen came asking for 24-hour pharmacy in the city, and I was surprised that the city manager did reply to him towards the end of the meeting, but it was so disappointing that, I mean, a simple phone call would give so much information. I mean, people don't realize, I mean, I guess people who live in Eiffel Towers don't really call pharmacies or anything. They have staff to do that. Even though the Walgreens has the permit, but they close at 9:00, so I went and talked to the pharmacy manager, and she said, "All these decisions are made at corporate level." Walgreens is only one store, unfortunately, in the Caneo, but there's plenty of CVS and Rite-Aids. And I would ask that you should have a meeting with them and come up with something, because lo and behold, just the other day, I had a granddaughter that I needed medication for at 11:00. Luckily, it was not prescription, so I was able to pay the high prices at Ralph's and get it. But it could have been. The nearest one, even Walgreens, is open on Rose Avenue, and so is Walmart in Oxnard. But if a person is sick, this is something I don't want the government to be telling private enterprise. Maybe they ain't a demand for it, but there sure can be a need for prescriptions later on in the evening. I also want to, in the remaining one minute, that's why I spoke in Urdu, perhaps I was going to get an additional minute or two, there's going to be a tea party at the corner of Hillcrest and Lynn Road from noon to 4:00 p.m. I am a big supporter of President Obama, but there should be people from Thousand Oaks protesting the mismanagement and waste of taxpayer funds in this city. I mean, in this economy, when people are struggling, $3.5 million was spent without even any discussion to buy this land next door. And this city hall that people think, I mean, the mayor said, I mean, there was a talk about, "We need a place." But the people said, "We need a place without paying, having taxes." $64 million to build it, $300 million in debt in this city. I mean, who's going to pay this? I mean, those little kids that came over here? I mean, we need to rise up against the wasteful spending at this city hall without even any regard. Look at what they did to the Home Depot. I mean, this is what it is. 4-1. 4-1. I mean, this is empty. I mean, it's disgusting.
That concludes the public comments section of this evening's agenda. We'll now move to item six. We'll now move to item seven, redevelopment agency consent calendar, pleasure of the council. Mrs. Bill de La Pena?
I move to approve the calendar with the exception of G, 7G.
Anything further? I have a question on F. Well, I'll direct to the city manager, then, please clarify the single source, or who's, John, are you speaking? Oh, there's, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Adams.
Good evening. Question on cost.
On, on item F, the request for single source, there isn't much information, I'm always, always like a little more information when we bypass the process.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. Just quickly, it is patented equipment, the Nalco controllers assist in full integration of the system's capacity, so, I would say that, based on being the patented system, that those controllers are best suited for that equipment.
Okay, that's fine. All right, we have, who's going, let's do it before we take the whole, whole thing, item G, clarification, you had questions on item G?
Yes, Will Dan is, I was wondering, is receiving the contract for the city in this particular case.
Correct.
And there were other applicants, and there is a list of the other applicants, however, the list does not state what the other applicants, basically, what their bid was compared to Will Dan, of temecula.
Correct, usually as a standard, because this, the evaluation on professional services is not based on cost, but is based on experience, qualifications, the best fit of the firm. There was a internal review panel that looked at those aspects, the experience, the team that was coming in, and selected Will Dan based on that. As far as the pricing, I don't have their original proposal on pricing in front of me, but after we selected the most qualified firm, which is the goal of any RFP for professional services, we then negotiate pricing, and at that point, staff negotiated lower rates based on the bid that they originally performed. The reason why there is a two-year option is because, to reduce the price almost 10%, we said, if, if performance is there, we will extend it two additional years. So, the reason why pricing isn't there is the, the selection is based on the best qualified and not the best pricing.
Is there, can you recall whether there is, was a big difference in the bids, nonetheless?
You know, in this case, this is standard services, that's not just provided to Thousand Oaks, but cities throughout the nation because of the OMB federal funds that are coming in. They were all within 10 to 15%. We negotiated down to pretty much the closest to the lowest that we got as far as bids, so, at the end of the day, they were very close to the lowest, but we selected them based on qualifications.
Okay, well, there was a motion on the floor, and then...
I, I also have a card.
Oh, okay.
Is that, you're all, you're all set? Okay. I have a, a card on item seven, Mr. Nick Kidway, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Niberry Park, representing Concerned City in Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, distinguished city council members. First of all, I want to talk about the missing item, which is generally not available in print, but the minutes, and especially since the historical people are still over here. I mean, what are you, you folks going to do when history calls upon you and the minutes are so bland? All that will be written would be just her name, not even one sentence would be written in the minutes as to what she spoke, and you are being dishonest and disloyal to the citizens by approving such minutes. I sent you all an email and a fax, I appreciate it, I don't know, this time it is in the green packet, this boiler. It's a thing called Tassar, I mean, it's on the internet, too, I mean, it's basically exclusive to this company that you deal with. I had a question, I hope it will be answered, generally doesn't, I mean, the boiler was installed in this building without a permit, i.e., illegally. I mean, it was in, in the consent calendar, I have the records. Is this the same company that installed the illegal boiler that you are still doing business with, or has any reprimand for people doing, or it was a staff person that had installed the illegal boiler in this building? And then waived the bidding, thirty thousand dollars is pocket change. Well, good stewards of the taxpayer's money, right? Congratulations, Mr. Fox, campaign finance, that was your bag. I mean, why is it on the consent calendar? Why can't, I mean, there's nothing on, I mean, you have three-page calen, agenda, why not have a discussion about campaign financing and what the future of this city should be? I mean, I've been saying for years, I mean, you have misguided, ridiculous camp, city campaign sign law. It has failed, it discourages people from running, it adds to the cost, I mean, we have a gentle lady over here whose sign I still remember, she's the voice of reason. I mean, just a simple sign like that, I mean, you remember that. It doesn't cost millions of dollars, but it's an anti, it's, it's a pro incumbency odd thing. I mean, in Westlake Village, I mean, there's no better city than that, they, you go over to Costco, the whole median is full of signs, but in this city, you need to have written permission and all that, and I've talked to all of you folks, I mean, your people in the Zee place sign that do not meet the ordinance, I mean, who likes to have lawmakers that are lawbreakers? Change the law, I mean, you don't need it, I mean, if you, people put, I mean, one of the most cardinal things which you have done is, you don't have signs on top of buildings, but you have put signs on the building that is the Roy's throwing by 23 freeway. And also, think about maybe a full-time mayor, how about a mayor that is paid rather than having a city manager running it? These are the kind of things, these should be debated and should, should be done, rather than running with a clock and with these funny things and buzzers and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion to approve consent with the exception of seven, Mrs. Bill de La Pena, are you comfortable with seven now? Or with the G?
I'm, I'm semi-comfortable, but comfortable enough to vote approval.
Okay, fine, we have motion. Comments to the motion?
The motion carries 5-0, and I just want to read the title of the ordinance for 7J, an ordinance amending sections of the code revising the definition and adjusting campaign contribution limits to reflect changes in the California Consumer Price Index and the city's contribution limits and disclosure requirements.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight, public hearing. Would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, a municipal code amendment to modify the oak tree ordinance, oak tree preservation and protection guidelines resolution, and establish new application fee, filing fee, MCA 2009-70100. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have eight people who have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards. The speakers will be allowed four minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Staff report, Mr. Jeff Spector, Mr. Spector?
Mr. Kearns.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen Kearns. Oh, Mr. Kearns, I know you're up there.
That's right, we look alike.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gillette, and members of the council. As mentioned, the item before you is a municipal code amendment pertaining to the city's oak tree protection and preservation standards and guidelines. The request involves consideration of amending both the oak tree ordinance, as well as the oak tree preservation and protection policy resolution, as well as establish a reduced filing fee for simple encroachment requests. The purpose of this amendment is to consider simplifying the review procedures and the protection standards for oak trees, and to consider providing an exemption from the permit requirements, including oak trees planted by a property owner. Just as a brief background, in 1970s, when the first city's oak tree ordinance was adopted, in 1987, the oak tree preservation and protection policy resolution went into effect with the intent of providing tools to implement the oak tree ordinance during a time of, the city was experiencing quite a bit of development activity. In 2003, the residents' roundtable began study of this ordinance. In 2006, the residents' roundtable recommended initiation of a municipal code amendment, which formally began consideration of exempting homeowner-planted oak trees. In September of '07, the commission considered the amendment and voted to recommend against the exemption of owner-planted trees to city council. In October of 2007, the planning commission's recommendation on the amendment was presented to city council, and after consideration, city council directed staff to widen the scope of the oak tree ordinance review to include all zoning categories, consider a less costly permit application type, and discuss the topic of homeowner-planted oak tree exemptions. And at last month's planning commission meeting, the commission voted to recommend approval of the procedural changes that are contained in your packet, but not exemption of the owner-planted oak trees. During evaluation of this amendment, staff performed community outreach. In 2009, we mailed letters inviting participation of the current oak tree ordinance protection review to approximately 220 groups and individuals. This occurred on two separate occasions. Towards the end of 2009 and the beginning of 2010, four additional notices of public hearings and notices of the application were sent to the same mailing. Overall, we received about 20 responses. As a result of staff's analysis and community feedback, staff is proposing certain changes to the oak tree ordinance and protection guidelines. The first is providing additional exemptions from activities that currently require permit. This includes printing above driveways, walkways, and parking areas. The second is establishing a new permit type and a lower permit fee for minor encroachments. This would include installation of walkways and performing necessary repair work to utilities such as wastewater laterals. The third is allowing an ongoing maintenance program for oak trees through a single permit process. This would be issued for a specific time period specified by the permit itself, and this would allow owners, groups or individuals responsible for one or several oak trees, such as homeowner associations, to perform necessary and anticipated work without filing a new application permit each, each time work is necessary. And lastly, there are several cleanup items proposed, which will eliminate both redundant text and relocate appropriate definitions and standards from the policy resolution into the code itself. In addition to the recommended procedural changes, staff is providing several options for council to consider that would provide an exemption for owner-planted oak trees. The first option is to exempt owner-planted trees without any sort of procedural requirement. Under this option, there'd be no permit requirement for the owner of a tree, and this essentially would put the city in reactive mode based on complaints, and if someone called and said that an oak tree was being removed, we'd investigate at that point. Option two is establishing a new permit procedure to determine the status of an existing tree. This would involve a homeowner submitting a site plan and an application for exemption from protection standards. Staff would evaluate existing data, such as aerial photographs and grading plans and other material that we have, to determine whether or not it was an owner-planted tree. Under this option, it would actually reduce the potential of removal of native trees. This type of application, there would be no fee associated with this permit request on trial basis. And option three is establishing a tree registration system and database for owner-planted trees. Under this option, a property owner would submit a site plan depicting the location of a tree prior to planting it, as well as other pertinent information, such as photographs. And then staff would verify the actual location of the tree versus site plan by performing a site visit and maintain all related documentation under the property address for future reference. Option nine is utilizing both the retroactive permit procedure, as well as the registration system. And option five is maintaining the current standards and providing no distinction between an indigenous tree and a owner-planted tree. After evaluation of the ordinance and the resolution, staff is recommending that the council introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolutions to become effective the date the ordinance does. This alternative includes the proposed procedural changes, but it does not exempt homeowner-planted oak trees. However, should staff, or should council wish to provide an exemption for owner-planted trees, staff suggests option number two, which would establish the permit procedure to determine the status of an oak tree, whether it was owner-planted or if it was, if it grew there naturally. And under, for this alternative, staff recommends that council introduce the ordinance, direct staff to incorporate the appropriate language for option two, for, bring it back for second reading, and return the resolutions as amended by option two for adoption along with second reading of the ordinance. This concludes staff's introduction, and staff's available for any question.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Our questions of staff, we'll start down with Mr. Fox, and then work our way back this way.
Thanks, Mr. Kearns. You indicated in your report that we did this community outreach and we got 20 responses back?
That's correct.
Two, zero?
Yes, 20.
How many, how many mailings did we do?
It was about 110 mailings, which captured about 220 associations, there was, there was certain homeowner associations which were responsible for several groups, several individual homeowner associations, so the management companies received those notices, and we relied on them to forward those to their...
Well, Caneo Oaks doesn't have a homeowners association. They got a lot of oak trees there. So, did we do mailings to Caneo Oaks?
No, we did not.
Okay. And I would imagine many of the oak trees in Caneo Oaks are not owner-planted, they're like 200 years old, they're the exact kind of trees we're trying to preserve, but they're on private property.
That's correct.
So, the, I guess my first question is, is if we didn't do that, I think we missed probably a key segment of the community that probably would have an interest, certainly in the permitting part of this, in terms of how you go about getting your tree trimmed over your driveway, that type of thing, so, I don't know how we're going to reconcile that, but, but that's an issue that I think we need to look at. I'm just curious, how did we determine who we were going to send these notices to?
Well, we sent them to every registered, we have a, we have a database which contains all the registered management companies and homeowner associations throughout the city. So, we mailed them to all of them, as well as the Boulevard Association, Mesa Rich, other companies, businesses within the city. Through that process, if I could just talk about the Caneo Oaks, several of the items that are listed in the exemptions, particularly that type B application, was with the Caneo Oaks tracked in mind, they have a lot of, if you look at one of the exemptions, it's repair work, such as wastewater laterals.
Right.
We get a lot of, a lot of requests, repair, their laterals, because they're, they're all clay pipes, and they do have the mature oak trees with a lot of root intrusion. So, in order for them to come through and get those repaired, they have to go through the permit process currently, which is, it's not timely for something like that.
Right. I, I'm not, I'm not questioning staff's intent, it's, but we can't get away from the fact that unless there's a different perspective from staff, it's probably the, if not the most, one of the most heavily populated oak tree areas in the community that is on private property that would need to be addressed, and we didn't even mail to those folks. So, I, you know, in terms of notification, it seems to me that, that, that's something we probably should have, should have looked at. The other issue is, do we have any idea at all how many private property owners have planted oak trees on their property? Is this a big problem, or is this a little problem? Is this a big problem or is this a little problem?
Um, we don't have a number on how many people would have planted private, or oak trees just as a landscape...
Do we keep records of how many people come in and ask for permits to trim trees or, or do something with respect to an oak tree on their property?
We do. We average about 50 permits a year.
Okay. And do we have any kind of sense of how many of those are, just based on the age of the tree, it's pretty obvious they weren't planted by the homeowner? Out of those 50?
Um, the majority of them are mature trees, are older trees.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, the reason I'm saying that is, uh, about 50% of them are requests for removal because they've just got to the age where they've, they've died or they became a hazard.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, so of the 50, would you, would you say that, that 50%, 75% are not owner-planted trees?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Okay, and this is only for oak trees, just for clarification, right?
Just for oak trees.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, we're, uh, writing legislation, for lack of a better description, for very, very small population of folks. It seems to me that we should be able to address this on a case-by-case basis. Uh, and I don't know, I, I kind of want to hear from the speakers, uh, but that was my initial kind of takeaway from reading the report, so I, I just needed that clarification. I may have some more questions when I, when I hear from the speakers, but we're, we're talking about, uh, changing the law to affect a very, very small group of folks, and, and some of those folks, we didn't even ask, which are the Caneo Oaks people. I know there's other oak trees in the city, but I think, uh, certainly of all the residential area, uh, the Oaks Mall certainly is one, uh, but, but, uh, from a private property situation, I would imagine that, that, that Caneo Oaks is probably going to have the most oak trees, and we did, we did not send a mailing to them, so, um, that, that's, thanks for the clarification. I, I may have some other questions, Mr. Mayor, if we hear from the speakers.
Thank you. This is Bill Delapena.
Thank you. Evening, Mr. Kearns. I have a question, actually piggybacking on what, what Mr. Fox said. You, the city sent a notification out to HOAs, you said, and the property management groups. Uh, I would imagine that's what you said, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, it is my experience that the property management groups don't always share the information they receive with all of the homeowners. It just does not happen. So I really wonder how many homeowners actually were aware of this ordinance when in fact it landed in a ma- in an appeal box or a mailbox and it wasn't distributed to hundreds and hundreds of homeowners. That has been a problem with, with HOAs, um, actually for quite some time, and, uh, obviously that's not the city's fault. It is the HOA's fault. Nonetheless, we do have that dilemma that the notices actually didn't reach the hundreds of homeowners it was intended for. Then the differentiation between owner-planted and a native or a volunteer oak tree, how is one to determine? Obviously, age was mentioned, but there are volunteers browsing, sprouting up on a, on a regular basis, on, on a daily basis, I should say. So how would one determine the difference, whether it would be owner-planted or a volunteer?
Well, that was really the challenge that we ran into when we were evaluating this ordinance and looking to distinguish between an owner-planted and a native tree. Um, just by looking at a tree, you wouldn't be able to tell. Uh, but we do have plans on record. Um, the site plans for a development of a tract or a custom home, if there was an oak tree on that property, it would show the location of that oak tree if it was there before development. So if it was, uh, if it wasn't shown on the plan, then it likely wasn't there. There's other factors we can use. Um, we can go, um, the development side, if it was a manufactured slope and there's no oak tree shown on the plan during that, uh, grading of the lot, then there likely wasn't an oak tree at that time either. We also have aerial photographs that go back as far as, I think legibly about 76. So we can use those, even though, uh, if it was a smaller tree at the time, based on the scale of those site plans, it would be difficult to tell if there's anything there. Um, but we do have documentation which would help us determine whether or not it was there prior to development and protected as part of that development, or if it, uh, could have been planted after development.
How realistic is it for homeowners to actually call up the city and say, and wanting to register that they just planted an oak tree?
It's unlikely.
I would, I would think so.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would think so. Uh, I'm, exactly, why, why would you do that? So it's...
Well, I, uh, maybe I can address that a little, excuse me, that was one of the options that were considered if the council, uh, did want to exempt owner-planted trees, and it's not the option that we're recommending. Uh, the option that we're recommending, should the council wish to extend that, uh, opportunity, is for, um, the homeowner who wants to remove a tree, uh, come in for a permit, and if it is an owner-planted tree, uh, then we will, we'll, we'll do the investigation as Steve mentioned, and then if it is an owner-planted tree, it'll be, uh, granted an exemption to remove it. So there wouldn't need to be a registration, it's just at the time they wanted to remove it, they'd have to get clearance from us first.
And then the question, another question I had is comparing to your recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission adopted staff's recommendation, correct?
That's correct.
And it appears that tonight, that recommendation is somewhat changed, and why is that?
Well, staff's recommendation, the first alternative that's listed is still for the option five, which was recommended at the planning commission level. And that's primarily due to the distinct, uh, being able to distinguish between an owner-planted and a native tree. Uh, if there is a determination that we want to go forward with exempting owner-planted trees, and staff is suggesting the option two, which would be the permit procedure where we can actually evaluate a site and determine to the best of our ability whether or not there was a tree there and agree they're native, uh, it was a native tree or if it was planted after development of the property.
But why are you giving the council that recommendation?
Well, there was, it was, uh, recommended initially by the residents' roundtable. The residents' roundtable suggested a recommendation of exempting owner-planted trees. Um, that was direction by council, was for us to like, take a look at exempting owner-planted trees, so we're given the option of a procedure to perform that task.
Okay, and then I was wondering about the, whether staff also looked at the loss of revenues versus savings to the homeowner with this new ordinance?
Well, based on the number of permits, it wouldn't be substantial. Uh, as mentioned, um, previously, the majority of the permits that we issue for oak trees are for removal of dead or hazardous, which, uh, there's no fee for those types of applications. So, uh, it would be nominal at best.
I mean, speaking about removing hazardous trees, one of the provisions is that city staff issue an onsite permit right then and there? If you could please elaborate on that or augment that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's similar to what occurs now. The difference is, um, currently the oak tree consultant or the authorized agent who goes out to the property and takes a look at the tree and determines that it is, uh, for example, a fell tree, or if it's creating some sort of hazard, it's starting to creep a little bit or lean a certain way where it looks like, uh, it's going to fall. The, the consultant would authorize removal of the tree right then onsite, you remove the hazardous situation. The applicant itself, or the owner of the tree, is required to come down to city hall after the fact, fill out an application form, and receive a permit with conditions to, for example, to, um, replace it with a 15-gallon oak tree somewhere on the site, or donate it to a park or other facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Mr. Kearns.
Evening.
How you doing tonight? There was a comment on page five that mentions that the purpose of the original oak tree ordinance was to protect the oak trees that were in the Caneo Valley, uh, during the rather rapid construction period that we enjoyed or suffered, um, so that the bulldozers didn't just roll over them. We're certainly well beyond that, that point now. Um, was that, was that fact mentioned, or did it come up in conversation in the planning commission meeting?
It did come up in this, in staff's report, in the presentation to the planning commission. Uh, I don't believe there's any questions on that item, but it did come up as a matter of topic.
Okay, thanks. I, I was looking for it, and I, I kind of lost myself in the various reports in there. Um, thank you. You know what I'd like from you, if you would, is the dollars that would be involved in any operation involving an oak tree with the ordinance as it's proposed, um, going from the $180, any necessity for having a, a formal oak tree report or landscaping, uh, plan, or anything that you can imagine, because I'm afraid we're, when we hear from the people, we may hear some stories about, uh, significantly greater dollars involved.
If you can bear with me for one second, I do have an...
Absolutely, thank you.
Now, are you looking for the actual cost that would be that a person would occur to go through the application process as well as hire a consultant and hire someone to remove the tree? Are you looking for something other than that?
I want to know every conceivable dollar you can think of, because the stories that I've been told in my relative short tenure on this, uh, this council, um, people talk about thousands of dollars involved in getting rid of an oak tree that's been a hazard to their life and limb. And so I'd like to, uh, get an idea of, of what you think is going to be a reasonable amount of money involved with the new ordinance.
Okay, uh, if you look at page 89 of your staff report, there's a table contained, and that was from the, uh, December 14th planning commission meeting. Uh, we provided, so, it's a cost estimate based on a scenario that we provided to, um, tree companies and arborists to try to get a cost, uh, a ballpark of how much it would cost someone to do work to a tree. Um, the application filing fees are listed, there's the deposit amounts. If you look at the scenario in, in the footer number one, it was a 20-foot-tall coast live oak in an easily accessible area, so it wouldn't be on a hillside or somewhere where they're going to bring other equipment in to perform this work. The tree removal itself, if you look at the dead or hazardous situation, it was $500. For the healthy tree, it was $400 to $1,600. The city review of the oak tree report was anywhere from $70 to $600. Uh, the oak tree report preparation, this is from the private consultant, was anywhere from $450 to $1,000. And then you have your city application filing fees, um, for commercial or industrial properties, it's $775 application fee. And for single-family dwellings, it's $185, plus the, each of the applications is accompanied by a $180, uh, deposit to separate consultant time. So, um, you, you can be in the thousands of dollars before you end up actually getting to the point where you're removing the tree.
Okay, yeah, you're fairly comfortable with those numbers then as being, uh, pretty much what people would expect to pay if they're talking about getting rid of an oak tree?
Yes.
Or could be. Okay. Uh, Mr. Prescott, I'm sorry, did I...
I'm, I'm sorry I interrupted, but I was just going to elaborate that there is a distinction as to whether or not it's a dead and hazardous tree, which is the other, other column, and in that case, there are no costs other than the actual cost, uh, that they would have to pay to have the tree removed. Uh, the city doesn't charge a fee, we don't require an oak tree report, and no, obviously no review of an oak tree report.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, the clarification. And, uh, pardon me, please, for springing it on you without giving you a warning to look up this stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions of staff at this time? There being none. Madam City Clerk, what's the speaker time, please?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, thank you. Our first speaker, Mr. Russ Goodenough, followed by Mr. Dave Galbranson, followed by George Good evening, Mr. Goodenough.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, council members. My name is Russ Goodenough, longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. My comments tonight are concerning the proposed revision of the oak tree ordinance. Mr. Mayor, I would like a, a clarification, though. Um, it's my understanding that this, uh, proposed revision includes, uh, trees other than oak trees. And from the discussion I've heard tonight, it, uh, we've just been, uh, specifying oak trees. Is this, uh...
For purposes of clarification, would the clerk please stop the clock? Mr. Prescott?
This is just oak trees.
So there's no, uh, there's no provision for, um, permits on other trees?
That's correct.
Or are you going to be addressing the issue of, uh, of trees other than oaks and permit, the permit process at any time, uh, this evening, or any time in the near future?
Uh, no, we're not. The, uh, if I may...
Please, please, Mr. Prescott, I, I think it's important to clarify, this discussion, this agenda item, this evening.
Right, it just deals with changes to the oak tree ordinance. Several months ago, the city council adopted an ordinance that related to acceptable pruning of trees of all varieties that were included within a, um, city-approved landscape plan that was a condition of an entitlement, for example, at a shopping center in the parking lot, to actually put in the code, um, what the standards for pruning were. Um, before that, um, the concerns had been expressed by property owners and, uh, and tree contractors, uh, and arborists, that the city really didn't have any standards. And when somebody pruned the trees in their parking lot, and we felt that it was, uh, excessive, uh, and we would have a code violation complaint against them, they, they said that was unfair because we didn't have any standards, uh, even though anybody that was looking at it could tell that the trees had been, uh, really overly pruned. So we worked with a, um, committee, a focus group of, uh, property owners, mostly commercial property owners, uh, landscape architects, arborists, um, uh, landscape contractors, et cetera, and came up with some mutually agreeable standards. And then the city council adopted those as part of the code, um, a few months ago. So now we, now we are able to tell people, well, uh, you can prune up to 25% of the canopy, and you can't lollypop a tree and things like that, and it's right here in the code, and so we have a standard to go by. There was a, um, uh, safety valve, if you will, that if somebody, a property owner fell to need to, uh, uh, prune trees in excess of those standards, they could apply for a, a permit from the city, and if there was good reason, the city would issue that. But again, this only applied to, um, trees that were within approved landscape plans, which would be for shopping centers, industrial parks, apartment projects. They did not apply to trees that a homeowner may have planted, because those are not subject to any city-approved landscaping plan. Uh, there was a little bit of confusion about this, I think based on some, uh, press coverage a few weeks ago.
Thank...
But tonight's, um, action just relates to the oak tree ordinance, and as Mr. Kearns explains, it's really kind of two issues. Number one, making it easier and simpler for homeowners to, and homeowners' associations to do, uh, routine maintenance of oak trees on their property, uh, basically for clearance from structures and, uh, ongoing health of the trees. And then secondly, the issue of whether, um, the city should exempt, uh, from the oak tree ordinance, um, trees that somebody has planted voluntarily, um, and that's really a policy issue before the council.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Does that clarify for you?
It, it does, um, I'm going to dispense with my, uh, prepared remarks, but, uh, I would like to comment that, uh, there are, um, issues that I have. Personally, uh, I have some commercial... Personally, I have some commercial property located in just off Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and I understand the reasonings for getting an oak tree permit. But the necessity and the requirement to also get permits on other landmark trees under the oak tree ordinance, and I'm specifically referring to a requirement that was levied on me to also pay additional fees for a toyon tree permit. And I understand there are other trees that are requiring permits, landmark trees. These are additional expenses to businesses, and in this recession, which is the most severe I've ever experienced, and we still haven't bottomed out yet, I'm asking the council be as lenient as possible on businesses during this particular time, because there's a lot of businesses that are teetering on the edge. And these additional-- I understand the needs for additional revenue for the city, but this is, to me, the wrong approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodenough. Dave Galbranson, followed by George Hutchinson, followed by Judy Lazar. Mr. Galbranson, good evening again.
Good evening. This is the City of Thousand Oaks owner's oak tree preservation and protection ordinance. And though I feel that it was supported, and is a sacred cow here in the City of Thousand Oaks for many years while we were constructing the city, the time has come to put some common sense into it. And I want to commend staff, and citizens groups, and city council for having the nerve to put it back on, the agenda, to try and simplify it. And I think most of the work that was done is okay. It does, however, lack some factors of common sense and fairness. And I'd like to address those tonight by first stipulating that I would go with recommendation two on the vote this evening, specifically for the owner-planted trees, and an element that was left out in the common sense aspect, and that is, a tree that may grow wild from an acorn somewhere on your property. Look, why not incentivize us to put oak trees on our property, or let the ones that grow from acorns grow? Because I'll tell you right now, if they get two inches at chest height, they're not going to make it. They're gone. If we want to preserve oak trees, let's incentivize it. If they're on private property, and we plant them, or they grow from an acorn on our property, we should be able to remove them. Even in a landscape plan, if we're required to put an oak tree in, we plant it, there's a provision in the ordinance that says, if you want to remove it, you plant three more. Okay. But we own the darn tree, we should be able to remove it. Common sense, folks. There is another item that kind of gripped me a little bit, and that was, it says homeowner. It should say property owner, or just owner throughout the ordinance. Judy Lazar brought that issue up, and I commend her for that. It shouldn't just say homeowner, it should say property owner. Another little pet peeve that I have is, our code enforcement officers, when they come out, only have one form, and it's called citation or violation. I had a monument oak branch fall. I called the city, they sent out a code enforcement officer, and he gave me a violation. And I said, "I didn't make the branch fall, give it to God." So at least, let's give our code enforcement people recommendations to go get a permit to do some modifications, so that we aren't offended immediately by getting a citation. Finally, and this is common throughout government, I think, whether it's Washington DC, or Sacramento, or the government building inventor, or here at the city council, and that is, if you make rules that concern private property, then by golly, you ought to live by the rules. And that is your non-libility of the city. When these trees are two inches at chest height, they become community trees. If something happens, the homeowner's responsible for it, you folks aren't. I've gone through the process of getting permits, oak tree reports, and the trees still fall, and caused $150,000 worth of damage. I spent $25,000 suing you folks, and was kicked out after beating Ford Demers because of Section 5-14-08, and it's in two different places. Come on, you guys, it's got to work both ways for us. It's got to have common sense, and it's got to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galbranson. George Hutchinson, followed by Judy Lazar, followed by Janet Wall.
Mayor Gillette and council members, I am here, the Saint George Hutchinson, Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening representing the Braemar Gardens Homeowners Association, and I'd like to share with you our plight with the oak trees. We may be somewhat an exception to the rule, but I think that a lot of what we're experiencing applies this evening. We are an 80-town home condominium association, heavily wooded over. We have, we believe, between 400 and 600 oak trees within the earth, 400 to 600 trees within that 80-unit complex. Of those, 95 are oaks, and eight are protected sycamores. We believe our landscape and appearance and management program is among the best in the city. Visitors to our association comment on it. I've had city staff there, they've commented on the appearance and how well we keep it. We pride ourselves on taking care of our trees and our landscaping. But it has come with a price. It is our belief and understanding that all but three of the protected oak and sycamore trees were planted in accordance with the tran-- excuse me, track landscape plan by the original developer. Tree placement, however, appears to have been somewhat indiscriminate, in many cases without consideration for future growth, maintenance, or practical ability to fully comply with preservation standards. Many of the oaks were located very close to the homes, and within 12 feet of the homes, and the narrow confines of driveway medians, and directly over utility lines, drainage, irrigation, water, sewer, et cetera. As much as we love these trees, they're now causing considerable problems for our association. Our association is 19 years old, these trees are beginning to mature, and the problem is going to continue to get worse, not better. Oak tree issues rank among the most significant source of our member residence complaints to our association, and frankly, all we can do is refer them to the City of Thousand Oaks, and say, "Our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do, talk to the city." Among our problems are as follows. Landscape oaks planted in narrow median strips between condominium driveways are causing extensive damage to the driveways and walkways, and creating trip hazards. I'm surprised that one of our residents isn't here tonight, who's had his driveway uprooted I can't tell you how many times, drainage lines taken out. We had one person that had their water service cut off due to oak tree root incursion last week. The track landscape plan apparently totally disregarded the location of drainage lines, with oak tree roots now causing flooding and extensive repairs. A lot of these drainage lines that drain the backyards are a gravity flow type situation down the street. They cross over three or four condominium units on the front, and they pass directly under oak trees that were planted, right on top of them. There is no place to relocate the line, because the trees there and there, again, crossing over the various driveways. Rip croning on the confines of the small condominium front yards make the use of decomposed granite, river rock, or other typical means of maintaining areas under the drip line of the trees impractical, if not nearly impossible. Residents frequently complain about dirt and mud front yards. Landscaping and irrigation is futile, and possibly in conflict with preservation ordinance. In one case, multiple landscape oaks were planted within the confines of a 17-by-21-foot yard. I personally have three oak trees in the front of my condominium. Encroachment into and around street lighting is ineffective, and in fact, before we could ever get a permit, Edison comes out and does a poodle cut that I would rather not see done, very frankly. I'd rather be trimming the tree properly around the streetlights, rather than Edison coming out and just taking a huge whack out of them, so we have some kind of street lighting. Homeowners complain of landscape oak branches overhanging the residents, encouraging rodents, and interfering with the enjoyment of upstairs balconies. I guess that's my time. I would encourage you to pass the ordinance this evening, and I would also encourage you to give serious consideration to the homeowner-planted issue. I agree with Dave, we need a carrot, not a stick, approach on homeowner-planted oak trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson? Mr. Hutchinson, could you come back for just a minute, please? Mr. Fox has a question.
Yeah, thank you. You did a good job of outlining some of the challenges and problems, but just for clarification, do you have a recommendation? Mr. Galbranson indicated recommendation number two.
That would be very much my recommendation, would be two. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson? And I also, I apologize for that--
No, that's okay.
But consistent with your comments, there are two speaker cards on file from residents of your homeowner area--
Thank you.
I'll reference those at the conclusion of the speakers. Thank you. Judy Lazar, followed by Janet Wall, followed by Nick Kidway. Good evening, Mrs. Lazar. Welcome back to the chamber as a former council member and former mayor.
Thank you, thank you. It's nice to be back again. Good evening, Mayor Gillette and council. I'm here about the oak trees. You know, when I sat in your seat, I wanted to protect oak trees, and I still do, and I think that the city has done a great job of it. As you know, the ordinance that we have today was passed when there were vast tracts of empty land, and we wanted to protect those trees. I was here when that ordinance was passed, as were you. We wanted to protect oak trees from being mowed down, basically, by developers who wanted easy development. Today, that's not the case. Thousand Oaks is a residential community, it is largely built out, the residential lots are no longer vacant, and the threat to native oak trees is no longer the issue. The issue today, for me and for other homeowners, and frankly, I don't want to take my oak trees out, but I understand those who might. The issue today is one that requires, as Dave said, some common sense. A homeowner who wants to update his landscaping today can remove shrubs and trees that, you know, he or a previous owner planted, because they no longer meet his current needs. They have, they may be too large, they may be poorly located, they may block views, or impede the installation of desired new amenities. He can take out those trees and shrubs, unless they're oak trees that he planted. An oak tree that a homeowner planted can't be removed today, and that's just not right. That is just not right. Does it make sense? We protect our native oaks for the benefit of all, and the city has done a great job of it. But let's show a little concern for the residents, and allow them to enjoy their own property. If you want to plant an oak tree, great. If you've planted an oak tree, and you want to take it out, that's okay, too. I agree with the recommenda-- well, I agree with option two, removal with a permit. In fact, I came down here in December and made a suggestion to the planning commission that we go through a minor modification process. I don't care what it is. I think that there's a way to remove a homeowner-planted oak tree that is reasonable, and I think that you can do it. I did listen to some of the comments that were made about Caneo Oaks, and you know, Caneo Oaks has some wonderful native oak trees, but there are some oaks that are there that are homeowner-planted as well, and a homeowner should be able to take those out. The vast-- they may not have been notified in this process, and Mr. Fox is right, they have no homeowner association. And yet, the city has the ability to get the word out if it decides to go through and allow a permit process for the removal of homeowner oak tree, homeowner-planted or developer-planted oak trees on private property. I think it's something that needs to be done. We are at a different point in the development of Thousand Oaks than we were 40 years ago, and we need to bring our standards up to date, to allow residents to use their property reasonably, and to encourage them, in fact, to plant some oak trees, if that's what they want to do, but to plant them where they want them. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I sure hope that you vote for option two. I think its time has come. Use a little common sense, this could be a win-win situation. We could be different from the state legislature and Congress, we could actually get something done. So be a winner. Find a decision that helps everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Lazar. Janet Wall, followed by Mr. Kidway, followed by Stan Fall Boone.
Good evening. Janet Wall, I live in the City of Thousand Oaks, and it appears that I'm going to be the lone voice here tonight in favor of not changing our oak tree ordinance. I'd like to tell you about one other thing. I was going to do this at public comments, and thought we can do it in the four-minute span. We have at Caneo Valley Botanic Garden, a new UC Davis-sponsored arboretum All Stars. This project is plants that are going to do well in our native surroundings with less water than we have now, and that's what we're all looking at. That's something that is completely missing from your report tonight about oak trees. If you go and you look at any information on native plants, and what's going to work in California in the days to come when we have less water, Quercus aguafolia is right at the top. It is one of the trees that is going to continue to survive when all of us are turning off our sprinklers, because the state has mandated it. This is where we're headed. This is what our project is about at Caneo Valley Botanic Garden. As a 2009 California master gardener, I'm very proud to be part of the research on this project. I'll be collecting data, we'll be supplying it, and it will be available to everybody in the future. Our project doesn't go in until March, but you're headed in the wrong direction here. What we need to do is protect trees that our future generations are going to have when all the others aren't going to be able to make it. I would mention to you that option two is obviously going to be prohibitive in the amount of staff time and in the expense. How are you going to accurately and honestly accomplish a list of every oak tree that's been planted by somebody? I just don't think that's going to happen. I would encourage you to go with no change to existing regulations, in respect for the people who have come here and said, "You know what? We have trees that are really seriously encroaching on our infrastructure." Obviously, the city has approved far too many homes too close to oak trees, and those have to be taken care of. You can't have dangerous trees, or trees that are causing people to spend thousands on replacing their infrastructure. But aside from that, you simply aren't going to be able to distinguish native trees from owner-planted trees, and for that matter, they're all native. This is where they come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Stan Fall Boone, followed by Rick Lemel.
I didn't realize there were so many people. Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park. Yes, in this city of oaks, you get four or five minutes even to speak about the oaks, but only three minutes to speak about the budget, which is far more important. I was on the citizens resident roundtable. Staff mentioned that there were recommendations by us, we spent considerable amount of time. I almost didn't recognize Mr. Kearns because of facial hair, but he still looks pretty good-looking. He was very smart in the meetings, very good suggestions, but so disappointing in that, I mean, when we were fired, let go, service is not needed, right, Mr. Fox? It was said, "You'll be available when we need you." Not only did my phone ring, I was just waiting, not even a postcard, not even a postcard. Tell Mr. Postman, remember that song from Elvis? Well, some of you know I designed and sold and did work on pools in this community for some time, and I just remember two homeowners. One was in a modest home in Newbury Park that wanted a pool. Living room was very modest, but he had dreams, like a council member-- Living room was very modest, but he had dreams, like a council member has, about his daughter. He wanted her to be a competitive swimmer, so that's why he had called me and wanted to get a pool, and I didn't even have to take my measurements and all that. Setbacks, he did not need it as well as there was an oak tree, and in the backyard. So I had to walk out, and I still remember feeling really awful about that. Then there's a second example that I still remember was a beautiful North Ranch home on five acres. It was actually four windows that I went there, I believe, but not for pool. I think they had a tennis court. They had five acres, and they had five oak trees in their backyard. Now, that's where I can see, and it's also facing, visible from the neighbors and the golf course, that's where you need an ordinance. Common sense, voice of reason. I mean, I would go so far as to say that anything, any homeowner, any business property which is on one acre or less should really be completely exempt. I mean, what is the business of you folks coming and giving a permit, inspecting it? I mean, all these properties, I mean, these homes used to be worth, what, $25,000, $30,000? Now they are worth, I mean, they used to be worth $600, now they are worth $400. I mean, there's a financial incentive on this thing. I mean, I'm a critic of the city and the government, as everybody knows, but I think it's a completely false and ridiculous charge about slow growth or about this city cutting down and chopping oak trees and all that. Actually, I mean, there's twice, if not three times, as many oak trees now since inception of 40 years, and it's great, and it will remain that way because just about everybody that I know loves trees, and we have the problem with the drought and stuff like that, but we still want the trees. And so if somebody, it's a choice that people make. I mean, if somebody wants to have a tennis court in their backyard, or if somebody wants to have a swimming pool, I mean, why should they not be allowed? And why should they have to spend all this money and get permission and stuff like that? It's not a living creature. I mean, they know better about it. I mean, it's disgusting that this is made into a political ploy, that some people love the trees more than others. We all love them, and just let common sense prevail, and like the last speaker had the motto, "Voice of reason should be heard." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stan Fall Boone, followed by our final speaker, Rick Limmel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And council members. My name is Stan Fall Boone. My wife, Mary Ann, is here. We came to Southern California 13 years ago, and we were mightily impressed by the magnificent native oaks that we encountered here. We left Pennsylvania at that time and left a property which had an absolutely spectacular eastern oak that was probably 150 feet high and 150 years old. We loved that tree, and we wouldn't have done anything with that tree except to maintain it and make sure it stayed there. Now, when we came to Southern California, we looked in Lynnmere, and as a matter of fact, we actually considered one home that had a magnificent native oak, and if I wouldn't be here tonight if that was the oak that I had in question. I think those are wonderful trees, and they should be protected, and protected ferociously. Now, we did decide to take a property, again, in Lynnmere, and unfortunately, on that property, something we didn't know at the time because of some naivete, were three developer oak trees. They were planted by the oak trees, and they were kind of, you know, small, medium-sized. Now they've grown up, and they've basically grown up in a big ball, except for one of them, which is actually, seems to want to move to the other side of our street, and so it's growing out, and it's growing out about this level so that it actually is a hazard. And if you read the current ordinance on that tree, the current ordinance, that we have to spend the permit fee, the planning fee, plus the fee to either trim or to remove the tree, to remove a hazard, and I think this is quite excessive, and I support what some of the previous speakers have mentioned, is that if the trees are on our property, they're clearly developer trees, and they are trees that, I think it would be kind to say, I'll be kind and say that they're not pretty. They're not like those magnificent vate of oaks that we're all used to around here. So anyways, so we have this one tree that's out over the street. The two other trees are quite close to one of the easements, which has drainage from the hill behind us, from the common property, and that, so I think they present a hazard over time that we certainly have to consider. Someone mentioned the costs. I wasn't going to bring that up originally, but I think when you look at the cost for removing not one tree, I estimate it's somewhere $1,500 to $2,000. I have three, so it's going to cost me a bit more, and that includes the permit and the tree plan and the cost of removal. I think that the council should really consider whether this is fair to treat property owners in that fashion. So what I'd like to just finish off with is to say that I support option two. I think it's a good one. I think it's a fair compromise, and I would hope that you would all vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone, and our final speaker, Mr. Rick Limmel. Evening, Mr. Limmel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Rick Limmel, Newbury Park. I'd like to start off by telling you that if we've learned nothing else from history, we've learned it's never right to do the wrong thing. We, thank you very much, Councilmember Fox, Mayor Protem Fox. One way to guarantee that no one will plant any more oak trees is to start penalizing them for doing so, and I think we should keep that in the back of our mind through this entire discussion. I think staff and residents have done an extraordinary job, not just an extraordinary job on trying to put this all together through us, but staff has had the fortitude to stay with this thing, as near as I can check, at least six years, trying to come up with a better way. I am very supportive of option two with a couple of changes. I believe that one of the changes needs to be that the indemnification of the city is removed. It doesn't seem right that the city can make a decision about something that happens on a property with absolutely no responsibility whatsoever, and so I think that's very, very important. I think it's also to keep in mind that something closer to option two is what was suggested by the residents' roundtable in 2006. So there's some history here as well. I think that it's a good idea to incentivize people to plant oak trees, but not to penalize them. For example, where I live, there will be oak trees on my property that I have never planted, that the city never intended to be planted, that came from an acorn. That's clearly wrong. It doesn't mean that I hate trees. I love trees. The city basically had street trees planted, all oaks where I live. Now, common sense comes in, and guess what? You can't park your car in front of your house on Monday evenings, because if you do, they won't pick up your trash, because where your trash would normally go is now impeded by an oak tree, and they can't lift it into the truck. By the way, the trash company is the one that's approved by the city. So we're not thinking of the big picture here, and I think we need to. I never think it's a good idea to take away private property rights. A person's, and that's why I don't want it to just be homeowners. A person's property should be their business, as long as they're not impeding anyone else's freedom. And so for those reasons, I think what we want to do is encourage people to plant oak trees, but not penalize them for planting them themselves. Last but not least, I've been president of an HOA for six and a half years, and one of the HOAs I was president of literally got penalized for having 175-year-old and older oak trees. And when you're putting away money that you're charging people every month, so when that oak tree falls, you can replace it, that's not right. The way I look at it is, if God wants to remove an oak tree, far be it from me or the city of Thousand Oaks to take issue with it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Limmel. That concludes the speakers on this item. I have two written statement cards, both in favor of the ordinance, and they're from residents of Brimar Gardens. Okay, staff, response to statements to speakers?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Gillette.
Please, Mr. Kearns.
In response to comments made by Mr. Galbranson and Mr. Limmel, the proposed language, if council elects to go with one of the options of exempting trees, the language does say owner-planted, not homeowner, in both the staff report and in the proposed ordinance language. So I hope that clears it up for Mr. Limmel and Mr. Galbranson. In response to Mr. Hutchinson's comments, staff has visited the Brimar development, and we did see that there is a situation with the trees now. They are growing to substantial size. They're pretty much occupying the entire plant area between properties now. Some of the root systems are causing damage to driveways to the point where, I believe Mr. Hutchinson mentioned, one property owner cannot open his garage door because it's uplifted to the point where it's impeding that. Staff, in the language in the application types, under a type A application, any tree that is causing substantial property damage can be removed. The oak tree maintenance program would also help their situation, particularly with the streetlight example that he used. They can propose maintenance of these trees over a long period of time and continue the maintenance, so it's not creating an issue there. Just one comment to Mrs. Wall's comment about the staff time to list all oak trees, that it's not a recommendation to go around inventory homeowner-planted trees. It'd be case by case as an applicant comes in and makes application. We would then perform the evaluation and see if it was in fact an owner-planted tree or native tree. There's not going to be any sort of proactive registry of these trees. Mr. Kidway's comment about the exempting trees on one acre or less, that was discussed at the residents' roundtable level, brought forward again in July of 2006 to city council as a recommendation. It was recommended against at that time. Staff believes that that number is still arbitrary. There's development constraints on each individual lot that could affect it regardless of the size, so that's why we went with the direction we did. And hopefully, as far as the trash truck example by Mr. Limmel, there are clearance-pruning exemptions now being proposed, and if this goes through, then that would address that issue, and hopefully be able to lift the tree to a point where it's no longer impeding the trash pickup services. And that's all the comments I have.
I had one to add to that. One of the speakers referenced that this might be perceived as a way for the city to generate revenue. Actually, it's more the reverse, because we are, the ordinance, as recommended, would exempt certain work that now would require an oak tree permit and filing an application with a filing fee, and then also for other work that now requires a full oak tree permit. The ordinance would require a lower-cost oak tree permit for certain minor pruning, the $180 permit, so there'll actually be a small net reduction in revenue to the city out of this, and it will benefit all property owners, not just homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Any further questions of staff? Mrs. Irwin.
I just want to clarify again. Mr. Hutchinson brought up a lot of issues that I think homeowners in Thousand Oaks would have with the oak trees. I don't think we necessarily need to interview everybody that has an oak tree to realize those are the issues facing homeowners. With all the problems he brought up, the new ordinance or the revisions to the ordinance will resolve them, correct?
They will address all the issues that Mr. Hutchinson brought up.
Okay, and then the other thing that I thought did seem pretty reasonable with that option two is, are you distinguishing between an acorn that's dropped and a small plant growing from that and a homeowner tree?
We're not distinguishing between volunteer trees, if you will, and native or owner-planted trees.
So option two would basically treat both of those the same?
No, they would not. The native trees, the ones that are grown from an acorn that were planted by a homeowner, those trees are not looked at as the same as something that's planted by the owner. Essentially, I don't think we'd technically be able to tell the difference over a period of time. If we look at the documents we have and the information on the site plan, the grading plans, still wouldn't show a tree there when development occurred, so if someone told us it was an owner-planted tree, then...
So really, they are both treated the same? I mean, technically?
Yeah, technically, they would be.
No? Okay. Were you going to say something, Mr. Prescott?
Well, I'll attempt to clarify, and it is a difficult subject, and it's one of the reasons why staff was, as you could probably tell, a little hesitant to exempt owner-planted trees, because it is difficult to distinguish between an owner-planted tree and then a tree that's a volunteer. And if you really take it to the logical extension of oak trees that came from acorns, well, all oak trees came from acorns, so where is that line drawn? But I think the process through option two, if the council goes that way, gives us the best, really, the best shot at determining whether a particular tree was planted or was a naturally occurring tree, and that will involve, as Mr. Kearns indicated, looking at the old aerial photos, looking at the site plans of the project when it was built, and I think that, and as well as testimony from the individual property owner who would like to remove a tree that they feel was owner-planted. Kind of from a de facto practical sense, if we look at an aerial photo before the project was built, and there is no oak tree there, and then we come back and see that the project was built, and later on, there was an oak tree, and if the property owner tells us they planted it, we'll obviously take that as good testimony based on the aerial photos. We wouldn't necessarily be able to tell that perhaps that they didn't really plant that tree, but an acorn dropped from a larger oak tree that might be right over it. That's kind of where you get those little volunteer trees.
But I wouldn't necessarily want to encourage homeowners to lie about it. If the oak tree wasn't there when the house was built, it seems that it should be treated the same as a oak tree that's planted by the homeowners. That's a comment. I guess that's not a question.
Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. Back to Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kearns, would it be a relatively simple matter for a homeowner to come to the city and try to have a tree removed, having to verify that what he's talking about removing is indeed something that's owner-planted or wasn't there when the property was developed? Would it be fairly simple? How time extensive would it be? How about dollars associated with that?
Well, for the smaller trees, it wouldn't be that difficult to distinguish, but the more mature trees, it could be a challenge to look at the plans and see exactly what was there at the time of development, the older developments that did not have, you know, as much information as current developments, that would provide a problem in distinguishing the types of tree, whether it was native or owner-planted. The amount of staff time, staff is recommending initially that this program be implemented with a no-fee, as a no-fee basis for the balance of the fiscal year, and reevaluate it based on the number of requests. We don't anticipate a lot of requests. That's why we're comfortable going forward with no fee on a trial basis, but if it does become a point where we're receiving a number of these cases which require something to offset staff time, then at that point, we would bring forward a proposed fee to be associated with that type of application.
Okay, thank you. I know there are problems that would be associated with having a policy where any oak tree on a private residence would be exempt. Could those problems be mitigated, dealt with, so that things didn't get out of hand? And would there be a lot of application for a removal of just any tree? Because it sounds... Because you, it sounds like there's not a lot of, uh, application to begin with.
Well, I, I have a tough time speculating on behaviors of people and how they would treat their oak trees if this thing went through, and, um, that everyone would just jump on board, start removing oak trees arbitrarily. I doubt that would happen. I think it's just more of a relief for individual property owners to know that they can do what they like with their oak tree when they want to. But to speculate whether or not they would just remove the tree, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that at this point. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the purpose of exempting owner-planted trees from native trees is that they don't need a permit to remove the tree or prune the tree?
They would not. If it's deemed to be a, an owner-planted tree, we confirm that it is to, with, with some certainty that it was owner-planted. From that point on, they would not need any sort of permit for any work to or within the drip line of that tree. So, if they wanted to prune it, they could do that, um, as it's needed, or if they wanted to remove it because of a change in landscape plans, it's their tree at that point, and it doesn't fall under protection.
Well, if a difference is being made between an owner-planted tree and a native tree, why do we expect, other than common human decency, expect the homeowner, or a property owner, I should say, to even go to the city to see? Can you check to see if this is native or owner-planted, uh, I want to get rid of it, whether it's healthy or dead?
Well, under current ordinance, they'd have to come in for a permit to do any of the work mentioned, so they'd have to file the application and go through our process to prune the tree, um, put a statue underneath it, a bench, some sort of recreational item. The exemption would be, would allow them to do that without coming to the city to begin with.
The proposed, well, our current ordinance provides for exemptions of dead trees or hazardous trees to be removed at no fee for application or permit or no oak tree report required? Or is there an oak tree report required for hazardous trees?
No, if a tree is determined to be dead or hazardous, then it's a no fee permit, no report, um, just a follow-up application and then, and a mitigation tree.
So, that is, there's actually no cost other than the physical removal of a dead tree, and that cost is borne by the property owner?
Just the removal itself, right?
Correct. So, that's already in our current ordinance. The new proposal waters it down by making it less expensive and streamlining, streamlining it more, correct? The removal of including a healthy tree?
Well, it's really just more of a streamline process. Uh, that's what it boils down to. You have an application that'll be submitted, or a permit that'll be issued onsite to the property owner, um, who will be given authorization to remove that tree then and there as it's done now, but the actual permit itself would be issued onsite, and they wouldn't have to come to the city and file the follow-up application.
The, it's, it says here on page eighty-nine that no, for a dead or hazardous tree, no report would be required, no city review, and for a healthy tree, the cost is anywhere from, um, four hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. Is that still, that is still part of the new, of this proposal, correct? Yes. Okay, as is the city review of the oak tree report. So, it could cost anywhere from, uh, five hundred and thirty dollars to sixteen hundred dollars. That is under the new proposed ordinance.
You're looking at the actual cost to remove the tree? Or are you looking at the procedural cost?
Yes. That includes also the cost of the oak tree report.
That's correct.
All right. So, ha, is that fee any lower than what is in our existing ordinance?
Or, I'm sorry?
Is the cost of, in, of the new proposal less than what our current, current ordinance stipulates?
Yeah, these, these costs are just for the removal of the tree. They're not for any sort of encroachment or pruning activity, that kind of thing. So, these, um, these are the application costs, the cost to actually perform the work and get a, have a report prepared for a consultant to go through the current process. If you're looking for a comparative between the proposed process and this, essentially, it would be no procedural cost plus, um, the only cost that would be borne by the applicant at that point would be the, the tree removal and, well, essentially, the tree removal.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not concerned about the cost of the tree removal. I was just concerned about the permit cost and the fees associated with wanting to remove, uh, a healthy oak tree. We don't need, even need to talk dead oak trees because there's no cost involved, period. So, really, in essence, what we're talking about is the removal of healthy oak trees.
Right, and the, um, the cost for removal of a healthy oak tree would be the same, unless, if the council goes with option two and exempts homeowner-planted oak trees, then there would not be a cost for those because they wouldn't need to file a permit.
So, then the property owner is exempted from paying that, but they still need a permit to remove the tree?
They need the, um, the permit, the no fee permit, uh, application, uh, basically for the purpose of allowing us to, um, research and document that it was owner-planted, and then once that's been confirmed, then that information will be tied to that particular address in the city's, um, geographic database, and then they are, as Mr. Kearns explained, able to, um, prune the tree without permit, remove the tree without permit.
Well, provided they approach the city with their plans. I mean, any given property owner, homeowner, um, could decide not to do that, as is, I'm sure, happening still already. Yes, no?
The question being whether other, whether homeowners are not approaching the city?
Ye, yes.
Well, I don't know, but the city does have, um, co-compliance policies on a complaint basis in residential areas, so if, uh, if it's reported to us that somebody has removed a tree, um, without benefit of an oak tree permit, we do follow up on that and prosecute in some cases. But, um, at a minimum, we would, if we were able to document that they, uh, had removed an oak tree without a permit, then they would be required to go through an oak tree permit for the purposes of establishing the, uh, the required mitigation, which could be in excess of the normal three-to-one standard. If somebody removed a tree illegally?
All righty then, thank you.
Anything further? Any further questions of staff? There being none. Uh, one additional document that was received is a, in, um, in lieu of a written statement card, there was a letter received from Mr. James Dean, who is a, uh, longtime community landscape architect and has a, an extensive history of dealing with the, uh, trees within the city. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, open for, uh, council discussion. Mrs. Irwin.
I am going to, um, support the staff recommendation, option two. I think we had a lot of homeowners here that talked about, uh, common sense, and, um, that's what we initially talked about when we, when we asked the staff quite a few years ago to look at the ordinance and make it less onerous on, um, homeowners or, or property owners, as, uh, Mr. Gobronson would like to say. Um, I think it'll make it much more likely also, and I, I appreciate what Ms. Wall was saying, that, um, that these trees survive very well in this climate. I think it'll make it much more likely that we will have homeowners planting oak trees because they will have an option to remove them. I think this is just a, a practical solution. This is, we are not minimizing, uh, our value of oak trees. We are just, uh, being reasonable with, uh, this option. That's my motion.
Okay, so, all right, let me go ahead. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As I alluded to earlier, since I've been on council, uh, I've received really quite a few comments about oak trees and people's nightmares in dealing with oak trees. Oak trees that get a clean bill of health and then fall over dead, uh, a week later. Uh, and that's, I, I don't mean that in a, in kind of a flip manner. It's, it's a reality because you can't always tell when these guys aren't well. And, uh, and it does happen, and it can get to be a, a rather burdensome, um, nightmare for the homeowner, for the property owner, to deal with it. I, uh, I have a great appreciation for the rights of the property owner. I have an appreciation too for the rights of the oak tree. Uh, it's one of the reasons we have the beautiful community that we have. Uh, however, I don't think that the rights of the oak tree should, uh, abrogate or, or supersede the rights of the, uh, property owner, um, totally. Uh, I think there has to be reason applied. I think option two, if we can deal with verifying that, uh, the trees are, um, owner-planted or at least not native, real old native, um, hopefully it'll work. But it's taken us a long time to get any kind of a modification, meaningful modification to our oak tree ordinance, and hopefully, if this passes, this will achieve what we're looking for, because it could be another ten, fifteen, twenty years before we take the next step. So, with that said, I'll, I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. I ask the city attorney to clarify the motion.
Thank you. Um, because we're going to be introducing an ordinance, the staff did, um, provide alternative language, so for option two, which is what, um, council member Irwin introduced, then I would ask that you, um, it's introducing the, the ordi, the motion would be to introduce the ordinance, um, waive second reading, or waive the reading in full, title only. And the page, significant page is page seventy-nine in your report, which is, um, substitutes a new section five dash fourteen point oh five, and clearly includes the exemption for trees verified that by the city as an owner-planted oak tree through an applicable permit procedure provided said trees are not part of a city-approved landscape plan. And then on page eighty is, um, new language for the resolution that would also be adopted, and that's Type E involves requests seeking exemption from the protection standards as shown, I'm sorry, as an owner-planted oak trees, provided said trees are not part of a city-approved landscape plan. This application shall be utilized as a city verification procedure. So, if that language is okay with the motion maker, then, um, the motion would include this language as shown on page seventy-nine for the ordinance and page eighty for the resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. Uh, Mrs. Irwin, does that satisfy the motion? And Dr. Glancy, you're, you're supportive of the motion. All right, down at the other end, Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. I do want to commend staff on working with the late residents' roundtable, uh, for six years or so, in trying to streamline this, and I think it actually was a good idea. And even though it is, in my opinion, more watered down, it makes it easier for the property owner, actually, to deal with the pruning, encroachment, or removal of an oak tree. So, with that, I'm in complete agreement. What I am not in agreement with is differentiating between homeowner-planted and, uh, native oak trees. I think that that actually puts a burden on staff trying to figure out how did this tree get there, exactly. I, I think it will be nearly impossible to do that, and I wish you the best of luck in doing that, really. I do. But I cannot support something that is going to be very difficult even for the experts to differentiate, uh, so therefore, I will not support the motion. I, with the rest of the ordinance, I'm okay, but not that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fox? No comment? Uh, the only comment I have is just a historical observation that forty-five years ago in nineteen sixty-five, the two major items of business, uh, reining in Lang Ranch and its almost six thousand, proposal of six thousand homes, and protecting the oak trees. And here we are forty-five years later, and we're still working on protecting those namesake trees, so, uh, I think we're remaining, reining true to our forebears. Uh, Mrs. Irwin, maker of the motion, comment? There being no further comment, please vote.
The motion carries for one, with council member Bill De La Pena dissenting, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending the municipal code, sections five dash fourteen point oh one through five dash fourteen point oh eight of chapter fourteen of Title V and section nine dash four point nine oh four G two of chapter four of Title IX, to revise and establish definitions, procedures, and protection standards for preservation and protection of oak trees throughout the city.
Thank you. Thank you all. The council is going to take a ten-minute recess, and, and please, folks, stick with me, ten minutes. I, okay? The council is back in session. At this time, we will go to department reports, item nine A. Mr. Adams, Finance Director, and I would ask, because of the sound issues in here, Mr. Adams, if you please get real close to the microphone.
I, as close as I can be.
Please, thank you very much.
I'm going to let the city manager make an intro on our presentation night, and I'll take over.
Excellent. I have here in my notes, calling the city manager to make an introduction. Mr. S, Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to say a few things by way of background. I remind council that the purpose of, of this report tonight is to provide you with a mid-year update on the current budget that we're in. We're in the fiscal year nine-ten budget, and we've passed the halfway point. We're into it about eight months or so, um, or seven months or so. Last month, we provided a very detailed, uh, year-end update on the year that ended for oh-eight, oh-nine, and then the next fiscal year, fiscal year ten-eleven, there will likely be budget revisions, and John will get into that at the end of his presentation, but we're really not going to focus on that, um, tonight. We are going to have a closed session at the next meeting on March ninth to talk about labor relations and, uh, some, um, labor issues as they relate to, to the budget. So, we have to be sensitive with respect to questions and discussions on labor issues tonight because we are going to cover that on March ninth. We'll come back to council on, uh, May twenty-fifth with the recommendations for the next fiscal year. I want to remind council that we have been in this, uh, a budget mode for several years now. The current situation that we're in didn't just happen overnight. It's been many years in the making, and thanks to council's strong leadership and vision and your support of the financial strategic plan process going back to two thousand and two, I have said this, I said it before, and I'll say it tonight, and I'll keep saying it going forward, that has really saved this organization. The long-term financial planning and vision, visioning that we've done has, um, anticipated the challenges that are in front of us and has allowed us to, um, confront those head-on and do so while maintaining a balanced budget and with minimal, minimal impact, um, on services, although we've had service reductions, uh, service level reductions of late. The strong financial and budget policies have also worked. This city council and the management of this organization have practiced for a decade a very conservative, um, budgeting. And I want to comment, going back to two thousand and five, during the, the time of two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, each time we came to council, it was with a status quo budget. So, going back five years, we've had status quo budgets where we did not have new revenues or new taxes, we did not grow the bureaucracy, we did not do any retirement enhancements. A number of local governments have done that, uh, in this county as well, and we've resisted that, and I'm very proud to report that to you, uh, that we have resisted that temptation. Uh, we also did not increase staffing, we did not add programs or services, we did not, um, lose any money in the, um, in our investments. A number of agencies, including agencies in this county, have lost considerable amount of, of funds in their, their investment pools. We did not. The city of Thousand Oaks has not and does not subsidize private development, we do not do sales tax rebates, and we maintain positive labor relations. And when two thousand and seven, at the end of that year, when the financial crisis hit from Wall Street and reverberated throughout the country, we shifted from a, an era of status quo budgets to an era of budget reductions. Again, it was due to the financial crisis, national state recessions, which resulted in declining sales tax and property tax and development-related revenues for the city, and John will get into that. And we've, we've been in front of you at least a dozen times in the past couple of years, giving you updates, so none of this should be new to you. I'm just recapping what we've, um, shared with you over the last couple of years. Uh, the state and the county of Ventura has done a number of budget cuts and takeaways from cities, uh, in particular, Thousand Oaks. And we've had a variety of state and regional regulations and shifting of cost from the state and the county toward the city, and we've had to wrestle with that. The stormwater permit is one that's been in front of you... The stormwater permit is one that's been in front of you of late. And the budget that we have now, now has $450,000 in recurring costs, plus a million dollars in capital costs that impact the general fund due to this new stormwater permit, which we feel is unnecessary, it's not good for the environment, and it's onerous, or we have to pay for it. It's a sort of mandate, if you will. In '07, '08, I want to remind the council of the general fund. We had to cut $4 million out of the general fund, and we worked close with the unions and the employees to do that. We also implemented a selected hiring freeze. A number of positions were not filled. And then, and last year, '08, '09, we had another $6 million in general fund budget cuts that we had to wrestle with. We unfunded 11 positions, and a number of positions were not fun, or filled through the continued selected hiring freeze. The year that we're in now, the staff report in front of you, and you'll hear more from John, talks about a $2.6 million shortfall in the general fund. And we've come up with a solution to that, and with the reductions that are necessary to do that. I'd like to point out to council, 2.6 million may sound like a big number, but it's less than 4% of the general fund total. So we're wrestling with a less than 4% problem. Okay, as, I also want to remind council, we are a low-tax city. Keep in mind, we have the lowest sales tax rate in California. We don't even get the 1% that most cities in the state do, because of the funding agreement with the county, we get 97% of the 1%. And that is material to us. We have a low transient occupancy tax, we don't have the utility user tax, the gross receipts tax, a parking tax, a childcare tax, and we have some of the lowest business license fees in California. It's a great place to do business, it's a great place to be a residential property owner, because the taxes and fees are as low as they get. So the challenge in front of us, since we're not looking at increasing taxes or significant increase, or revenue increases, we're looking at how do we further reduce service levels and cuts to programs and services, and all, and more importantly, come up with recurring expenditure reductions. That's the challenge that is in front of you. And I'd like to also stress the value of the strong and stable political leadership and sound and prudent financial management, especially with John Adams and his staff. I'd like to remind council that in the last year alone, despite all the budget cuts and the difficulties, we've had three bond rating increases. In May of 2009, our general fund bond rating, the underlying rate without bond insurance was increased from a double A minus to a double A plus. In July of 2009, the wastewater fund, its underlying rating by Standard and Poor's was increased from a double A minus to a triple A. We're one of a few, a handful of municipalities in this nation that have that rating. And then council, we haven't shared this with you yet, but last week, Standard and Poor's informed us that they're upgrading our redevelopment agency bond rating from an A minus to an A, which is amazing, given the state of California is taking so much away from redevelopment agencies. But because of our prudent financial management and the low amount of debt we have, we have a very low amount of debt, and the strength of our local economy despite the recession, we got that rating increase, even though the state was downgraded to triple B. So with that, I just want to stress the highly competent staff that you have. When working together, we're going to get through all this, even though we have the challenges. And I'd like to just conclude by saying, quoting the famous quote, "Where there is challenge, there is opportunity," and we will get there. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Finance Director to run you through the numbers.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Tonight, I'll give you a brief update on the fiscal year 2009, 2010 budget. We'll spend a little time on 2011, and then we'll talk about some future challenges, talk about the upcoming calendar, and of course, talk about tonight's recommendations. You saw the agenda earlier, the overview. I want to make these few key points before we got started. And Scott has talked about the financial strategic plan and the 12 presentations, the dozen or more that we have been in front of you over the last few years. Budget monitoring has been critical. It feels like we've been in budget mode for the last three years. So certainly, that's been a critical element to our financial planning. In 2008, the city council authorized the creation of the City Council Audit Finance Committee. This is, this financial planning has been in conjunction with that committee. They have been a valuable resource to staff and have provided amazing guidance as we deal with these reductions in revenues. As we move forward, all our budget recommendations are in full compliance with city council policies. We still maintain our reserve policy, which is 15% working capital reserve and an emergency reserve of 5%. Briefly, teamwork, a couple of things. I don't think we would be successful as a team without all the work of all the department heads and their staff. Certainly, coming up with recommendations has been critical as we move forward. Also, I want to just recognize my own department for all the work they've done over the last few weeks of putting together this report. Long-term financial planning, we talked about financial strategic plan, that has been critical. And of course, I think one of the major points of tonight's discussion on fiscal year '09, '10, is that with the reduction of 2.6 million in revenues, that we anticipate reducing expenditures or appropriations by an offsetting amount. So, next slide. Tonight, we are going to focus on the general fund, that is Chief Operating Fund, that is where you have your most discretion, that's what funds your major services, including public safety. We talked about long-term planning. The goal as we move forward on any budget, balanced budget, is to ensure reoccurring revenues match ongoing appropriations. And I'll just say this, we will show you slides on staff reductions. Staff reductions do equal service impacts and service reductions. Brief timeline, this is how we got to where we are now. In June of 2009, city council adopted, at that point, a structurally balanced budget. In last month, we provide you an update on last fiscal year. And over the last six weeks, we have been working towards this presentation on mid-year Before you tonight are really three recommendations. The first one is to approve fiscal year '09, '10 budget adjustments. That's recommendation number one and two. The second recommendation is to direct staff to review and recommend appropriate appropriation reductions and revenue enhancements for fiscal year 10 and 11. We will provide an update at the goal-setting committee, or goal-setting meeting next month. We will also be backed in front of you in May to propose reductions to ensure a balanced budget going forward in fiscal year 10, 11. And then finally, the third and final recommendation, which is recommendation number four, is to approve staff to perform an independent survey of unincorporated Thousand Oaks area residents on library services. This is related to services provided to those residents in the unincorporated areas. I don't need to show you this slide, but I just thought I'd throw it up really fast. Sales tax, these are the challenges that we're currently facing. Sales tax continues to decline, property tax is flat, we've had declining revenues and development-related revenues. Interest earnings are down, and of course, staffing and service levels have been impacted. Fiscal year 9, 10. This slide is to show you what actuals were for last fiscal year. This is what we provide you as an update on January 23rd. As you see there, that expenditures were 70.4 million. And the second column is the adopted budget. I think what's important here is to look at operating revenues. What we projected or adopted in '09, '10 was about a half million less than actual revenues last year. This goes to the point to say that we have been conservative in our estimates, we have anticipated some declines in some of the major revenues. But again, we didn't anticipate growth. I think that, as we will see, maybe our projections weren't, weren't as, maybe they should have been a little lower based on the 2.6, but based on the information provided back in April and May of last year, that was not possible. Expenditures, we did show a reduction of expenditures that was adopted, almost 700,000. And so the point being here is, is that adopted budget, at least for operating revenues and expenditures, were reductions from prior year actuals. This slide is just to show you where general fund revenues compare to general fund expenditures. Last year, 2009, was the first year that the red line, which is expenditures, overlapped and was higher than expenditures. The adopted 2010 and 2011 budgets provided those numbers closer. There is a difference for 2010 based on some one-time operating expenses. Pie graph just shows you that sales tax does represent the largest portion of the general fund at 35%. The second one is intergovernmental, which is vehicle license fees. Can you go back? Here's the current revised general fund budget at 66 million dollars. As you can note, sales taxes 30, or taxes and fees is 39 million dollars. These are our current projections. Our current projections are 63.7 million dollars. This provides a variance of 2.6 million dollars. The major category, the major reductions are in taxes and fees of 1.9. One million of that 1.9 is in sales tax. Our current budget is approximately 800,000 less than last year's actuals. Our revised budget for sales tax is now 22 million versus 23 million. Here's the city's top 10 revenues, single source. As you can tell, sales tax again is the highest one at 23 million. Vehicle license fee is 10.3 million. These two revenues represent over 50% of the general fund budget. If you take in the next two, the top, the top four represent 70% of the general fund revenues. And so when we talk about reductions, sales tax, you can see the actuals at 26.9 is the year that started reducing from 28.8, and it's been on a downward decline since. Vehicle license fees have been flat, and we've seen some minor increases because that's best valuation. But that and property tax, we anticipate being flat and declining potentially next Usually, I would just show you the sales tax trend line, which is the blue line. Certainly, it's jumped around a little in 2005. That was based on the triple flip, the infamous triple flip. But in 2007 was the highest year at almost 29 million, and it's been declining since. The red line is police. The correlation here is, is that sales tax is our number one revenue for the general fund. Police is the number one priority for the general fund and is the largest single-source expenditure that we have, our police, public safety costs. Last year was very close to being equal. We anticipate police costs being higher going forward than sales tax. These are three other, these are the top, the number two, number three, and number four revenues. These revenues have shown steady increases. We anticipate increases. Projections for 2011 are preliminary, and I would anticipate those to be reduced once we get some information in April and May. Transient occupancy tax is very similar to sales taxes, really based on how the economy's doing. We had some new hotels that were added, I believe, in 2007, 2008. We saw some growth in TOT. Since 2008, which sales, or TOT was at 2.8, we've seen declines over the last two years. I anticipate TOT this year to be 2.2 million. We've seen this graph last week, or last month, we actually added projections for 2010, 2011. We anticipate them being flat. There was no changes based on our current budget and our current revenues. I think building and safety and community development was very conservative in their estimates, and so there's no significant change in budget to projections. This slide is to show you public works revenues, specifically the revenues from actuals to budget. Certain revenues are very hard to project. This is a good example where revised budget was consistently around a million dollars, and it jumped around. Currently, the current budget's a little over a million dollars. Projections currently are at half a million for this year, so that's almost a $500,000 reduction. Here are a couple other major declining revenues. License and permits include public safe, or public works and community development. And interest income, we've seen declines because of interest rates that have been declining for the past two years. Let me get into appropriations really fast. We talked about revenues at 2.6 million less than project, or budget is less than our projections currently. We identified appropriations of 2.6 million, I'll go through those. But currently, this is what was actuals for last year at 70.4. We adopted a budget at 71.1, and for 2010, 11, 71.8. Again, very conservative as far as operating expenditures, which is salary and benefits, police, and M and O. Capital projects was the major increase there. For 2009, 10, here's the allocation for appropriations. Salary and benefits is 44%, police is 36%. That's 80% of total general fund appropriations are in those two major categories. Capital projects are only 5% at 3.4 million, or I think it was 4.9, and then transfers out in M and O. How did we accomplish a $2.6 million reduction in expenditures or appropriations? Several things have occurred over the last six to eight months. One, several positions have become vacant, and so part of the salary savings, which I'll show you, is based on freezing certain vacant positions. We have also postponed hiring certain positions that were deemed critical. The next one is police contract rates. Originally, in our projections that we disclosed to council back in the spring of 2009, anticipated a budget increase of 3%. The good news was, is that Fenter Kelly only raised our contract rates 1.2%. This is a savings of about 500,000. And then third, staff departments came up with reductions in M and O of 1.3 million dollars. The thing about M and O reductions are, some of these reductions are one-time. Certainly, we can do it one-time to close the gap based on this fiscal year. These are not M and O reductions that we can maintain for any length of time. I could give you lots of examples of us deferring equipment purchases and doing other stuffs. But 1.3 million we can do this year, we certainly cannot maintain those reductions in future years. And then fourth, and finally, we, council authorized a quarter of a million dollar reduction in our general liability fund transfer out. We only needed 120,000. Last year, we're recommending about 130,000 additional to match that 250,000. Quickly, here's the adopted budget at 71.1 million, salary and benefits, police, M and O. Those are where the reductions are. Salary and benefits, .8 million dollars. Police, that was the half a million dollar contract savings, and then M and O at 1.3 million. You can see the change is right there, 2.5, 2% and 2%. So as Scott said, we have revenue declines of about 4%. We're looking at expenditure reductions at about, almost 4% as well. Positions that are vacant, that were funded. We certainly are showing you here that currently, as of today, we have nine point, well, nine positions in the general fund, library fund, that are currently vacant and funded. And we have approximately nine positions in other funds that are currently vacant and funded. Some of these positions, as noted, have come vacant in the last few months. A couple of the positions are based on positions that were authorized to be hired but have been postponed, and those hirings are occurring now or will be occurring in the next few Talked about reductions in service and reductions in staff. This gives you a four-year history of our staffing levels as far as funded and unfunded. I think what's constant is that there are 483 city positions that are identified in the budget. In '07, '08, there was 483 that were 100% funded. In '09, or '08, '09, council in closing the gap froze 11 positions and took away funding from those. And so that was the first 11. This current year, there were 24 unfunded positions that were not in the budget. Some of those were the retirement incentives that happened before July 1st, some of them were other positions that became vacant during '08, or yeah, '08, '09. And then in 2010, those are the remainder of the retirement incentives. So currently, we are, 34 positions are currently unfunded in citywide, okay? And showing there that's 7% of the workforce. Now, what I will show you in a few minutes is that 34 of them are really coming out of the general fund and library fund. Other funds that have been self-supporting have not seen any staffing reductions as far as the need for unfunded positions. We show you what the police is, because we like to include the police department as far as the position counts. far as the position counts. '09, '10, and '10, '11 is the reduction in the Rover car. Citywide funded positions. This is changing the way it's presented, but to show you it based on funds. You can see that water and wastewater and the other funds have had minor changes. The reductions have occurred in the general fund, the library fund. Now, 27 positions and nine positions is 36 positions, and I told you that there's 34 unfunded. The net change is 34 because we have allocated other positions to other funds. So in the general fund and library fund, we have 36 less funded positions. This is the position count funded by department and includes the library and the general fund. There's two departments that are not included. City council, we did not show that separate, and the police has two positions that are city positions. But these show you the positions or the departments and the reductions that have occurred to equal that 36. Public works, 12 positions. Community development, over the four years, have seen a decline of five. Library has seen a decline of nine. Finance, six. CMO, two. City clerk and community cultural services, one each. So that covers staffing. I think what that provides is that we do have some funded vacant positions that provide some salary relief for this year. I think it shows you that we have 34 unfunded positions, which is, again, 7% of the workforce. But when you include that those 36, 34 positions are coming from the library or the general fund, that's a significant portion of that, of those funds. MNO, this is the listing of MNO reductions based on department. We showed you their adopted budget and then the proposed reductions. The 1.8 million does include the 500,000 from police. As you can tell, every department identified reductions in order to close that gap of 2.6 million dollars. Each department has different impact services. Again, a lot of these MNO cuts are one-time in nature and can't be maintained for more than this year. I talked a lot about the general fund to show you how we balanced, or at least identified reductions of 2.6 million based on revenue declines. May briefly talk about library, the library fund. I'm not going to go into much detail. The original budget was 6.9, revenue projections of 6.2, revised revenue projections of 6.2, which is a shortfall, or our projections are off almost 700, over 700,000. Based on that, the library came up with salary and benefit savings. They do have one vacant position, but there were some other benefit savings within that department. They also identified 224,000 in MNO reductions for a total reduction of 341,000. What this means is, is that the general fund will have to increase its transfer from our reserves to maintain the current service levels that are provided at the library. In discussion with the audit finance committee, talking about looking at service reductions, staff and the library department will look at additional service reductions for fiscal year 2010 and 11. But at this point, want to maintain the current service levels, and we'll fund that out of reserves or from general fund transfer in. This just quickly shows you library expenditures versus transfers in. Excellent. So in summary, general fund, 2.6 million dollars with a variance of zero, and then the library fund, of course, 7.7 million, less the expenditure reductions. All right, briefly, fiscal year 2010, 2011 preliminary estimates. We're not going to spend a lot of time on this. I think that this is our first review of 2010, 2011 general fund revenue projections. We anticipate at this point, and I went from these up until March or April, a 3.1 million dollar projection in revenue, less than our original adoption. 65 million is our new projection, that's 3.1. This revenue, shortfall 3.1, because the police contract rates were less, we assume a lower base, and so we anticipate at least a 0.3 million dollar savings there. Library revenue, we anticipate to be at least 900,000 less. This is, this does not include whether or not the county continues the agreement. If they don't, you need to add another 200,000, so 1.1. Projected gap at this point is 3.7.
John, I have a question, just to your last comment. My understanding is that we have been served notice by the county that as of the start of the county's fiscal year, July 1st, they will no longer provide us with the library tax resources collected from the unincorporated areas around the city. Is that correct?
That's what I, yes, they have served us notice at the point.
They've served us, so we, when you say if it happens, I mean, it's happened. Money hasn't stopped, or the money's whatever, but as of July 1st, so that's a reality then.
Yes, and when we were doing our original analysis, we, this has happened recently, and at the point which we were doing analysis, we did not, we included that revenue, and so I was trying to maintain the consistency.
Great, thank you.
So getting, adding the 200,000, that revenue shortfall for library would be 1.1 million, thus 3.9 million total. Just gap strategies for 2010, 2011. Salary and benefit reductions, as you saw, that was 44% of the city's general fund. Certainly, there needs to be discussions with the bargaining units, and I think that that's occurring as we speak. Reductions in MNO, we will take a look at this, but that's a hard area to balance the budget. Law enforcement contract, we can be very hopeful that what we have budgeted for next year is 5%. If those projections are changed and we get further information, maybe that could be a point of savings. Any reductions in staff will have an impact to service levels. And then, just a note, reactivation of brainstorming action group has occurred and will help us identify additional savings. Future challenges, it's shown there is the library funding cuts, CalPERS retirement, state budget cuts. They have their own problems, and it's very, we expect them to potentially be back at us in a future date. Transportation funding, stormwater permit implementation cost, stuff that Scott had mentioned earlier. And as Scott said, with challenges lie opportunities, so I think the goal is to become more independent. Briefly, here's the calendar for the fiscal year 10, 11, budget adjustments, and we will be back in front of you May 25th with recommendations. Here are the recommendations for tonight's council report, and staff is available for
Thank you very much, John. Questions? Start down with Mr. Fox.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I did ask for, and I just, I had a discussion with Mr. Minnick earlier today, and I know staff hasn't had a chance to incorporate this, but, and we really do need to look at the fire expenditures relative to our overall budget. That is something that has to happen. You know, we can certainly, and I don't want, tonight's not the time for fire service, but whether it's 5.6 million or 6.2 million, as a percentage of what we're not getting or spending, and when we're talking about some serious potential cuts in service, we really do need to look at that, and I would encourage the committee to do what they can to move that item, you know, move that item forward. The other, I guess the, staff's done a pretty good job. As I understand it, we're just using reserve money to make up the delta in the library funding, is that correct?
Correct.
$300,000 or something like that?
Yes, that's the current recommendation.
Right. Other than that, we're not using any reserves?
Not for, not for operations, not for ongoing operations. I think that, as noted, even with the amendments, we're still in compliance, that reserves will be used for capital projects.
Right.
And as you saw, there's use of reserves, I can tell you a slide, but there is being use of reserves for capital projects with this, within council's policy and direction, and that's based on, you know, growth in fund balance from revenues exceeding expenditures in prior years.
Okay. I just would direct your attention to slide 28. The general and library funded positions, and you have the departments, and then you have the number of positions and the cuts. And I'm not going to get specific here, but I think our staffing needs to reflect the services that we're providing to the community, and we need to start taking a very good look at what we need today versus what we needed 20 years ago. We just had a discussion about, we haven't moved very far with respect to oak trees, for good reason, for good reason. The city in 1964 was a different city than it is in 2010. A lot of that is tied to development, and the service needs for our community are different. We just need to recognize that, and this is certainly not meant to put value on one department over another, but we need to reflect the service needs in 2010 in these difficult budget times. So I, I'm just going to put that out there. I think staff's doing a good job. Mr. Minnick, you did a very good job of your overview. You know, you really did a good job of covering all the things that this city has done and continues to do for a number of years, that when we're having discussion about closing a budget gap of 2.6 million dollars, and at the same time, we can point to, almost in celebration, what a good job that we've done, not very many cities are doing that at all. And so, but in order to keep doing that, John, we really need, we need to take a look, because there, let's face it, as you point out, the MNO, that's generally a one-time deal. If we're going to save money, it's in staffing, which is in salaries, and that needs to be reflected in the services that we're providing. And that is not library, and that is not police. Those are frontline city services. I'm not saying that they're exempt. I'm just saying some of the support services that are important, but they're not necessarily services that the citizens are getting every day, those are the ones that we need to cut last, from my perspective.
Understood. And I, and this table shows you the opportunities that have come up front, whether it's been people resigning or...
Yeah, and even, you know, in other cities, they're looking at, you know, kind of an enhanced retirement program. I think there's ways to do it that are respectful of longtime employees, and I'm all about that, but, you know, before we start cutting library hours, we need to take a look at our whole city workforce and see if that's reflecting the needs of our service needs today. This conversation is occurring across the state of California, and certainly across the nation, I would imagine, so.
I agree, it is.
It is what it is, as they say. I'm just, I, the, I don't know what the slide number was, but it basically was your tracking of revenues and certainly the fees and the taxes. My sense is, for the next three-plus years, we're going to be looking at a flattening of that, or even a continuing to decline?
Yes, I think that we're at the new norm. I think maybe our projections for 2010, 11 will be our baseline going forward. So certainly, as you pointed out, that sales tax, we don't, we anticipate very little recovery, if any. Property tax, we would anticipate being flat, if not a decline. The major revenues, we anticipate being flat, if not a small decline, so that, several years going out.
Right. Now, we were fortunate in that we budgeted for a 3% increase in police, and it only ended up being 1.5%. We're probably not going to get lucky again like that.
We aren't, and this budget coming up in 10, 11 anticipates a 5% increase, and so that was built in when we balanced the 10, 11 budget. Certainly, we all know retirement costs are going up. That doesn't, that also affects Ventura County, and so there is some concerns there. But we have been very fortunate over the last few years that the increases from Ventura County police have been minor compared to some of the prior years.
Going back to slide 28, of the positions, of the citywide positions, how many of those vacant positions have been carried over more than two fiscal years? Do you see where I'm going? Is, if we, if we carry a vacancy for one fiscal year, okay, then we certainly receive that salary savings for that year. You can count that as a cut. Then the next year, when we're projecting our budget, you know, we need to start reflecting the fact that we cut that. We can't just keep taking credit that, oh yeah, this, we keep cutting, but the fact is, we cut five years ago.
Understood. The reductions in salary and benefits this year is only 800,000 in the general fund, and if you look at your slide, let me go back, slide on 25, those nine positions create the 800,000.
Right.
So your point on slide 26, that shows 11, 24, and 34, if you're asking me, in 2009, 10, how many positions have been vacant for two years? It's been 11. Currently, there have been 13 positions that have been vacant at least a year, and then the 10 have been vacant for about six months.
All right, now my expectation...
Those are unfunded.
Right.
And so there is, when we say savings, there is no savings.
Right.
We're not, I think we're just trying to show this to show you the impact of service levels and staffing levels.
Okay, but, and this is why, in relation to, this is the new norm, great, great line. My expectation would be, is that the next budget cycle, those aren't included anymore, they're just eliminated off, they're not, they're not, they're not positions that exist anymore, rather than not funded, because, like I said, I think council needs to get calibrated for, I don't know where you had it in here, a actual decrease, yeah, you have it here, you know, 43, 472, a decline of actual budgeted positions, not unfunded, because there's, there's a difference. We, the new norm, we need to...
Understood.
We need to, it needs to reflect where we're at.
Understood, and we'll work on the next to your budget rule.
And then, just a comment, I know that the finance committee has been meeting with the city staff on this. I just want to give you guys a nice job. I think the reason this is going so smoothly is because there's some council interaction with the city staff on an ongoing basis. I know I used to be on the finance committee. It's not an easy thing to do, and you do have to meet periodically, but I just want to give you guys some props for doing a good job in a very, very difficult time, so. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Speldele, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding some of the unfunded positions, I wanted to follow up on that. Even though we are operating with fewer employees and have been for two years at least, I, there is still a projected salary increase for 10, 11 of approximately $640,000. Can you explain that?
Contract.
Yeah, it incorporates or implements the MOUs that are approved. Remember, this was the adopted budget last June, and so at that point, it was in full compliance with the MOU, so that's why there's a projection in salary and benefits.
And that is even with a reduction of 34 positions?
Yes, but you have to look at, that 34 has occurred over three years.
Okay.
You are correct.
And the MOU expires when?
Well, each bargaining unit has their own MOU. The major, the general employees, which is TOCIA, expires, I believe it's not yet the end of 2011, so December 2011. The other two units, SMA and TOMA, which is the professional management group, expires the end of June of 2011. So TOCIA is six months later. So there's approximately, what, 16 months and 22 months on each contract.
And that explains why despite the 30, being minus 34 positions, there is a salary increase of 640,000 because of those MOUs, the contracts with the unions.
Okay.
The capital improvement projects, I don't see them in here, other than, they're not laid out in detail. I'm sure that fault, that that future programs...
Well, the CIP, capital improvements, there's two things. One is, we're not recommending any changes to the current capital improvement budget. Part of that is because council policy has always been to fund... Part of that is because council policy has always been to fund capital projects through reserves and fund balance that is available for capital improvements. That, just to cut CIP, we could cut CIP, but that doesn't really address the issue of ongoing revenues versus ongoing expenditures. And I'll say, I'll say it once and say it lots of times, is that we have a billion dollars worth of infrastructure assets, and to maintain those capital improvements and to do the infrastructure and stuff, is just, financially makes a lot of sense. And so when we look to reduce budget, we should be looking at ongoing costs related to our ongoing revenues, and that's why the recommendations on MNO, and some salary savings and police costs. So staff did not feel comfortable recommending any reductions in the current CIP.
I was asking because there are a couple of projects on hold for which $5 million was allocated, and those I think are still being held, correct?
Correct. So, going back a couple, it's not a couple of years, it feels like a couple of years, but going back to '08-'09, based on concerns by council after meeting with the Finance Audit Committee and the Capital Facilities Committee, which is made up of Mayor Gillette and Councilmember Irwin, some of those projects that weren't considered critical or did not have a high priority, weren't just put on hold, but in the current budget eliminated. The turnaround's a good example. I think that we had $2 million, and based on direction from the Capital Facilities Committee, that was eliminated, and those funds put back into reserve. So projects like that weren't carried forward into the current budget. The budget that is currently there are considered Priority One or Priority Two projects.
Okay, so the, so the Discovery Center and the Lang Ranch Park are still being carried forward to the next budget?
Yes. Lang Ranch is one. Discovery Center is actually funded out of a redevelopment agency, thus, a lot of concern for the general fund or library fund at this point.
Very good. Insurance and claims are set to double in the new budget. Can you elaborate on that?
What page are you?
On page 210 of my staff report, attachment four.
There, a couple of things occurred. One, we talked about the $250,000 reduction transfer out, that's part of the change. The other thing is, is that if you look in '08-'09, we had paid premiums for property insurance on an 18-month basis, and thus don't have expenditures in '09-10. So two things that happened that pushed down the adopted budget to 683, and then, based on projections in 10-11, we anticipate increases in those areas.
And a question about professional and contractual services, they are expected to go up by more than $1 million, $1.2 million?
Yes, one of, one of the difficulties with having contract services with the police department is, is they're reflected in professional and contract services. And so a 5% increase on $25 million is $1.25 million, and that's, makes up the significant portion of that increase. So one of the things that we don't do and break out in the budget summary is police contract costs from professional services. And we try to do that in the budget presentation, but we don't do it in the budget document. Hopefully that was clear, is that 29.3 million, 25-plus million is police services, and that increase of 1.1 is, or 1.2 is related to police contract services.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
And regarding the library fund, staff is recommending a survey of residents in the unincorporated area of Thousand Oaks. Who would be conducting the survey? What would be the wording, and why are we only surveying residents in the unincorporated area?
I'll, I'll do my best answer to that one. An independent surveying firm, we would probably issue an RFQ, asking for qualified people. Let's see someone, in as far as, why are we doing the unincorporated area? It's related to services that are currently being paid for by the county, and so we're looking at the unincorporated residents who get that benefit from the county.
And what are we trying to achieve with this particular survey, and when would it be conducted?
I'm going to turn that over to the city manager, since he's...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me clarify. We've mentioned this to the council before, since we received official notice that the county is intending to not, to take away the $200,000 a year as part of the longstanding library services funding agreement going back two decades. And what that is, is that is the portion of the property tax bill that is dedicated to library services from the unincorporated area residents who live within the, they're the, in the service area for the Thousand Oaks Library. So the Lake Sherwood folks, Casa Cano, Lynn Ranch, Rolling Hills, et cetera. And we've been before the council a number of times, and so the, the survey would be conducted by the same firm that did the revenue option survey. So we already, we've already talked to them, and they're ready to go. It'll be a relatively short survey, but to make these, and they're the Thousand Oaks Library patrons, so they'll make sure they're the Thousand Oaks Library patrons, and to make them aware of the proposed reduction and takeaway of those funds, and then to get their feedback with respect to the impacts on the library, and to see what their reaction is to those impacts. And then that data would be shared, we hope to get that data pretty quickly, to share it with council, if not in time for the goal-setting workshop in March, certainly in time for your meeting in May, when we look at next year's budget. Because if that money goes away, we will have to look at cost-cutting measures such as shutting down the Newberry Park Branch Library on Saturday, or the main library on Sunday, or reinstituting the non-resident fee, and making that non-resident fee applicable with no exemptions from it. So those are the type of questions.
Okay, so staff already decided that there was going to do, to be a survey, because you've already been in contact with the company, who will be conducting the survey?
No, there's, no, we've talked to the consultant that we're already using to find out if that would be a possibility, and it is a possibility, and therefore we're recommending tonight to get that information, so we have it handy, in case the trigger is pulled, to not remit those funds to the city.
Okay, so our library fund is, in the whole, about $900,000, and that is even without the assistance of the $192,000 from the county?
Correct. Without that $200,000 or $192,000, our projections for 2010-11 would be 1.1 million at this point.
And it's my, okay, and it's my understanding that it was, of course, the library commission, the county library commission, which made the recommendation to not fund this anymore to the tune of $192,000? And so the county board has dipped into the general fund in order to make up for that, for the time being?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're way, we're way off topic here. Yeah, we're in negotiations with the county, those comments are not accurate, and we'll, we'll come back to council with an agenda item, we'll come back to council, yeah, there's quite a bit of inaccurate information, but we will come back at a later date.
Okay, I'm just asking, didn't mean to ruffle any feathers, but I, without knowing what the survey will have, and what the wording will be, I find it very suspicious that this is happening again for a third time, right before the supervisory election, that the city is getting involved in...
Okay, that's, I think we've gone far enough into that now.
Okay, that is my comment.
Do you have anything else to remain to this discussion?
Yes, I do. In terms of travel expenses and training...
Yes.
I believe that there are, are there going to be reductions for 2010-11?
Everything is on the table, and I would anticipate reductions in all categories, so the answer to the question is yes.
Any idea what the percentage is, more or less?
No, we have not started developing budget guidelines for 2010-11. We, part of the goal, when we come to you at the goal-setting, is to get some broad guidance on areas that we should be focusing in on, so no, not at this point.
Thank you, and then there was one more thing, total maintenance. Let me see here, there was one more thing, but it's ripped my mind. Bear with me for just a moment, please. Okay, that would be it for now, thank you.
Down at the other end, Ms., Dr. Glancy.
Mr. Mayor, if I may suffer your indulgence and not make a, have a question, but just a very quick statement.
I would appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. I just want to thank Finance Department and staff for really coming up with a great review of our budget, and all the work that you guys go into in taking care of these shortfalls as they arise, so thank you very much.
Anything further from, anything further down here? Okay, I would just like to comment to all of the staff people that have worked so hard on this, and each time it comes back, for the last couple of years that we've been into this, there were those who suggested at the front end of this, that we just simply close the door, and put out a, an out-of-business sign on the front of City Hall, and as, as one of the people charged with the responsibility of being the steward of the resources and keeping the service, service lines, service systems flowing to the residents that we serve, I think you are all to be commended, that we have taken a very careful, very strategic approach to monitoring the situation on a regular basis, making appropriate adjustments as they, as they appear, and we are continuing to move in that direction, and I thank all of you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Mitnick, did you have a, let me see if there's, is there a motion out there somewhere? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I do have a card on this, Mr. Nick Kidway, Mr. Kidway?
Yeah, Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, representing Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, yeah, it's not surprising that you don't want to hear from citizens, the "Do Not Welcome" sign is out there. I went home and I started, watched the hearing, and I heard the city manager, and that just was, had to come back, because the bond rating companies might give you A+ and all that, but the taxpayers, you're not serving the community properly. It's, I mean, give you just a few examples, A, I mean, what is the purpose of having these meetings every, every month, and just rehashing the whole stuff, and not being serious? I mean, Mr. Fox is about the only one that is making some progress, but, I mean, you're not, I mean, it's free money that's coming, it's feeding at the public trough, that's what it is. I mean, Mayor, if you might allow me, I mean, I would like to invite the people, I don't know if anyone would be watching at home, to come to the tea party at 4 o'clock on Lynn and Hillcrest, and protest against the city, and I will be there. I mean, this is $900,000 a year that you folks have lost, because Home Depot was going to invest, this is the Westlake location, this is, this is just unconscionable to do something like this. I mean, the City Hall, I mean, I thought, even we were told four or five years ago that the debt was gone, but in the last meeting, a month ago, we were told that the last $200,000 was paid, and that's just for the building part, because you have 64, you had $64 million for the property, and not learning from anything, I mean, like the lakes, I mean, which is a losing proposition in this economy, when people are losing their homes, people are living in their, in their cars, Mrs. Irwin, you're smiling, and you're spending $3.5 million to buy this property next door, when one of the owners was Bob Majorino, and Mr., what was it, Oakstone Glass gentleman was here and all. These people here know about the property, this is none of your business to be buying property, stuff like that. I mean, sure, the city allows the redevelopment stuff, agencies and stuff like that, but it is, it is going to, going to crash. I mean, this is, we all know that this house of cars is going to crash, and then, maybe Dr. Gillette will be retired, and so will be Glancy, but I and my kids will, we will be left holding the bag when, when there are defaults, and, and I'm glad that Calpurs was mentioned for the first time. I mean, the problem in this city is that you have had increases, like the property, sales tax was $14 million 10 years ago, it went up to $28 million. I mean, what did we get? 124-hour car, and a few police people. It's all been, I mean, it's right, I mean, community development people are probably playing, going, doing instant messaging and running their own businesses, because they have so much things to do. It's such a shame that the former mayor said that, "We have cut the fat, we are down to the bone." Rubbish. I mean, learn to be like the, like the, like the, like the private sector, Mrs. Irwin. I mean, it's really disgusting, I mean, and it's sad that no one wants to come, and, I mean, just go to the Star website and look at the citizen comments, I mean, that will give you an idea.
All right. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, again, I think Mr. Mitnick did a good job of outlining, both from a historical and a practical perspective, the extremely conservative fiscal management the city has, has participated in and directed, from both council and city management standpoint, and it's exactly why we're in a position today, to manage a very manageable deficit. And so, you know, the facts are, they are what they are. So that being said, I'm going to move Recommendations 1 through 5, and that is to close a $2.6 million gap for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fox. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Speldelepin?
Thank you. These are very good steps being taken to close this gap of $2.6 million, and obviously, we'll have to do more. Since this is bundled together, 1 through 5, I will not be able to support it, because I don't see the wisdom in point in item number 4, which deals with this independent survey of a small portion of this area with a library. I don't see the wisdom in that at all, and therefore I will not be able to support the motion.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment to the motion? No clarification? Any comment to, as the maker of the motion, Mr. Fox? Nothing further? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-1, Councilmember Bill de La Pena dissenting.
Thank you. Item, item 10, Redevelopment Agency Reports, we have none. Committee Commission Board Reports, item 11, we have none. Item 12, Council Issues and Recommendations, follow-up reports, meetings, we have none. City Manager, follow-up requests from the public and announcements of upcoming issues. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only follow-up, or not the only, but one thing I want to comment on, we heard earlier in public speakers, some comments about the childcare center. Staff will follow up on those and work with the school district accordingly, and where appropriate, we will provide updates to council. By way of future items, the next council meeting will be on March 9. You did hear a reference made earlier to a closed session on some labor relations issues as they relate to the budget, we will have that. I want to point out special presentations, you saw some of the youth football leagues, but we will have Westlake High School's CIF undefeated varsity football champions in this chamber, to recognize them. They were 14-0, and I'd like to point out, they beat St. Bonaventure along the way. Department Reports, we have two, pavement management program update, and the Norwegian Grade project that's coming up, and that's it, by way, oh, and then the following meeting on March 23 will be the Annual City Council Goals and Objectives Study Session. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, Closed Session, the city attorney call, announce Closed Session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Members, members of the council, viewing public and staff. Council will be going into Closed Session with legal counsel, existing litigation, Conchi Altal versus Strartan Altal. versus Stratenotl, and it's pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection 8, and there will not be any need to report anything out from this closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. At this time, we will adjourn to our regular meeting on March 9, 2010.